Good morning and welcome to a city council meeting for Tuesday, July 26. I'll start off with the roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Carlson.
Present.
Counselor Dodick, he's not present. Counselor Middleton Hope.
Present.
Counselor Palladino.
Present.
Counselor Parker.
Present.
Acting Mayor Croson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
Here.
And Mayor Higgins.
Present.
All present except for Counselor Dodick, thank you.
Clerk, all right, start with the acknowledgement statement. The City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people past, present, and future while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta Region III. And I'll go around, and then for recognitions, and I'll start to my far left, Counselor Dodick is regrets, so we'll move to Counselor Campbell.
Oh, thank you, your worship. You know, here it is, summertime, and I, I think of baseball. And when I think of baseball, I think what a fabulous history Lethbridge has had over the years. And, you know, when you think of Henderson Stadium, you think of some of the players that have been there, Hall of Famers, and people who've won World Series, like Andre Dawson, Steve Sax, Sid Fernandez, Mike Marshall, and Craig Brock, all people who have played in Lethbridge. And there was one year that there was four teams that won national championships, three Little League teams and a, and a slow pitch team. So baseball is an integral part of, of what we have here in Lethbridge. We have amazing facilities. So just bringing it all together, a gentleman by the name of Ty Penner, you've probably heard about him, he played his minor baseball in Lethbridge, went on to the Vauxhall Baseball Academy, and he went to the, yeah, University, UBC University in, in BC, played some college ball there, but he got picked up by the Philadelphia Phillies. He signed a major pro contract. Now, he's a long way to go before he hits the big show, but it's just kind of recognition to what a great program and what great programs we do have in Lethbridge, and we wish Ty Penner of Lethbridge. He's from Lethbridge, too, so that's the cool thing on his major league career.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that mark. Very exciting news. Just a big shout out to all of the groups around town providing opportunities recreationally and culturally for our citizens to take into, many free of charge. I just hope folks get a chance to check out the schedule of amazing music and recreation events on our calendar and enjoy these beautiful days of summer. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to chuck wagon driver Chris Moly and the Lethbridge Lodging Association. The Lodging Association purchased Moly's chuck wagon canvas for the Stampede chuck wagon races, and the visit Lethbridge dot, visit Lethbridge dot com logo and website were displayed to an international audience for 10 days. It all wrapped up with Moly winning the July 17 dash for cash, not to mention some great exposure for Lethbridge. Also, a shout out to the Downtown BRZ and Tourism Lethbridge for hosting the July 12 amazing race broadcast that featured Lethbridge. It was great to see Lethbridge on the national stage, and we looked pretty good up on that big screen in Festival Square. Congratulations to Nikyuko on its grand opening of the Boonka Centre and 55th anniversary. And it was great to see so many of the Team Lethbridge partners gathered last week for the planning of Fall's Team Lethbridge Mission. Thank you to Economic Development Lethbridge for keeping this valuable community partnership and provincial government advocacy opportunity moving forward. And just a reminder to the public, now is the time to apply for our boards, commissions, and committees. The information is up on our website, Lethbridge.ca, and applications are open to August 28. This is a great opportunity for you to get involved in our city and some of the decision-making that goes on here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Over to Counselor Middleton Hope.
Thank you, your worship, nothing today.
Nothing today. Well, I'm sure we'll come back to you. Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgins, nothing for me.
Thank you. And on to Counselor Palladino.
Thank you. I'd like to give a shout out to Blair Richter, our manager of Parks and Cemeteries. The improvements made to the landscaping at Legacy Park and Henderson Gardens have not gone unnoticed. I know it's not very often you receive compliments from ratepayers these days, but your team was recognized and so good on them all. Thank you.
You. Counselor Parker.
Thank you. Most of them have been covered here with Mr. Penner, the Boonka Centre, Chris Moly, very exciting. And something to add as well to that is that he's continuing the rest of his races with the Visit Lethbridge chuck wagons, which is just extremely exciting to be able to have that showcased, and not just, not just around Alberta or Canada, but the world, which is really exciting, so. And I wanted to just bring up, last weekend I had the opportunity of attending the BMX provincials. I know it's something that a lot of us may not think is, is, is something that's, that's very big in, in our community, but I'll tell you something, there was over 450 BMX riders from, from all over the province that happened to be in Lethbridge at our BMX track, and it was absolutely amazing, the provincials, and how, how that, you know, we showcased again the community. So it's fantastic for economic development, it's hotels filled up, and, and of course, the, the shopping and the restaurants and stuff, so it was great to be able to see that in our community. With that, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda, and I have a resolution from Acting Mayor Croson that the agenda of the regular meeting of city council on July 26, 2022 be adopted as presented. City Clerk, are there any amendments?
Yes, Mayor Higgins, there's one addition to the agenda, that's bylaw 6374, the Ward Boundary Commission. It's item 7.1 in your agenda. It was included in your agenda last Friday, but it was included late after the published deadline, so it is proposed urgent business, and as per proper procedure, it needs to be added by council to the agenda to be considered. The reason it was just finalized on Friday, and it would be best if it could be included in the BCC advertising campaign currently underway to save costs and to save effort. Thank you.
No additional vote, just the adoption of the agenda would take care of that, correct, Madam City Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda as, as amended.
As amended.
Yes.
Okay, Acting Mayor Croson.
I'll call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? Next, move on to the consent agenda, moved by Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel. Be resolved the minutes of the following meeting of city council be approved and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the same. City council meeting 2022-07-05, and further be resolved that city council receive the status of directed resolutions 2022-07-26 as information, and further be resolved that city council provide first reading to the following bylaws. Bylaw 6366, land use bylaw amendment re 1102, Fifth Avenue South. Bylaw 6369, a bylaw to borrow for water utility uplands reservoir, reservoir upgrades. Bylaw 6370, a bylaw to borrow for the wastewater treatment plant electrical upgrades. Bylaw 6371, a bylaw to borrow for the wastewater treatment plant UV disinfection upgrades. Bylaw 6372, a bylaw to borrow for Walsh Drive, University Drive to Métis Trail, arterial road, and underground utilities expansion. And bylaw 6373, a bylaw to borrow for the water wastewater plant UV disinfection upgrades. And further be resolved that city council direct administration to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 13, 2022, at 3:00 PM for the following bylaw. Bylaw 6366, land use bylaw amendment re 1102, Fifth Avenue South. And I do have questions. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question through you to City Clerk if I can. I'm, I'm just wondering, in items 4.3 to 4.8, i-is it possible going forward to, to identify them in the agenda as first reading? I know we do so in the resolution, but I think it would help people understand that we're just bringing them forward at this time? Is, is that something we've discussed before, or am I just picking?
Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Counselor Carlson. I don't believe it's been discussed, I think it's a good idea, and we can go forward, we can add that to the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Second question, if I can, I'm just used to seeing them, and maybe we just didn't buy anything. Is there no procurement report for June? Or did we already looked at that earlier?
Mr. Matthews.
To your worship, to Counselor Carlson, I'm trying to remember which ones came forward, there's just no procurement report on this agenda. If the June one hasn't came forward, it'll come forward shortly. I'll have to take a look back in my notes here, I can't remember if we've done just the May or if we've done the Junes yet.
I, I seem to recall May, but.
So it might just be that it's coming to the, it will hit the September, it's just the timing of putting that information together after a month in, so I might have just missed the scheduling for, for on base, but I'll, I'll check on that.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Carlson. So, no further questions? See no further questions, Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, on our consent agenda this month, we have our city council minutes of July 5, 2022, our status of directed resolutions, and as we've just stated, we have first readings for a few bylaws. Bylaw 6366, a land use bylaw amendment re 1125th Avenue South. This proposed land use bylaw amendment will allow the existing building's main floor commercial space to be repurposed to provide two additional residential apartments. As mentioned, a public hearing for this is scheduled for September 13, 2022, at 3:00 PM. Bylaw 6369, a bylaw to borrow for water utility uplands reservoir upgrades. This project will improve reliability and reduce maintenance of the uplands reservoir through life cycle replacement and upgrading of aging mechanical and electrical equipment. The scope of this project was included as part of E21 Water Reservoir Upgrades in the 2018-2031 CIP. Bylaw 6370, a bylaw to borrow for the wastewater treatment plant electrical upgrades. This project will improve the reliability of the wastewater treatment plant medium and low voltage electrical systems and improve the safety of plant personnel. This is Project E21 and is a new project in the 2022-2031 CIP. Generally, wastewater utility CIP projects serve to meet regulatory requirements, address increasing wastewater rates, and replace assets at the end of their life cycle to ensure the efficient treatment of wastewater. Bylaw 6371, a bylaw to borrow for the wastewater treatment plant UV disinfection upgrades. This project will increase the performance and reliability of the wastewater treatment plant ultraviolet disinfectant, disinfection system, improve operator health and safety, and ensure we avoid increased maintenance costs. This project was E16 in the 2018-2027 CIP and is included as Project E23 in the 2022-2031 CIP. Bylaw 6372, a bylaw to borrow for Walsh Drive, University Drive to Métis Trail, arterial road, and underground utilities expansion. This CIP project CO3 creates sanitary sewer capacity for continued growth in West Lethbridge by completing the link between Métis Trail and University Drive along Walsh Drive. Bylaw 6373, a bylaw to borrow for the water treatment plant UV disinfection upgrades. This project will ensure and improve the reliability of water treatment plant ultraviolet disinfections, disinfection system, improve equipment performance, and reduce power usage. This is Project E14, and it is a new project in the 2022-2031 CIP. And again, generally, the water utility CIP projects serve to meet regulatory requirements, address increasing water demand, and replace assets at the end of their life cycle to ensure the continuous delivery of clean drinking water. Just a reminder to our home audience, full details of these bylaws, as well as our consent agenda and our full agenda for today are on our website, and if my colleagues have no further comments or questions, I will call for the vote.
That is opening, closing, no debate with that? All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. All right, we will move on. We'll move on to presentations, 5.1, Victoria Chester, Director of Advancement, Highway 3 Twinning Development Association, Re-Highway 3 Twinning Development Association 2022 Membership. Please come forward, and I see that you're joined by, you can do the introduction.
Thank you, I'm joined by our association president, Bill Chapman, who's also a councillor in the town of Coldale. So, I'm, I'm here today, oh, Bonnie, I think we're, we putting this up on display?
We are putting the presentation on, we just need a second.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry.
So, just gonna start with the invoice that was in your package, and reasons for coming forward today, and first, also wanting to acknowledge that we have some new members of council, and prior representative to the Highway 3 Twinning Development Association was Mayor Spearman, and current representation is our councillor Nick Palladino. We previously used to invoice on an annual basis the beginning of the year, when I joined the association, we started to do presentations, and we did a presentation for City of Lethbridge in July of 2019. Since then, we have invoiced in July and offered this presentation opportunity. So the first item here is to explain why we are invoicing our 2020 year in the middle of the year. The second item is our previous invoices have generally included a reduction in the invoice for the use of the Culver Room. We did that during COVID and didn't actually use the room, I think we used the room once in two years, maybe twice. And so, in discussions this year, we decided to invoice the entire, just straight like we would with Medicine Hat and our other municipal members, membership fee, and then we're going to pay when we use the Culver Room. So there's been a restructure of the invoicing based on differentiating us from prior years because of the lack of Culver Room credit. So the third item on the invoice is, as you can see, in 2021 and in 2020, we did not spend all of our funds for budgeted funds for the association, we did have carry forward, and we recognized a reduction in our, our membership fees. Generally, our membership fee is billed out at 30, at 50 cents per capita, and the prior two years, we've been billing out at 35 cents per capita. However, there is a maximum fee of $10,000 per population, and both Lethbridge and Medicine Hat meet that maximum benchmark. So currently, Lethbridge and Medicine Hat are two largest contributors towards our association. In prior years, I have been asked to present budget, which was not included in your package, so just to give you an idea, we rolled over approximately $39,428 from 2021 into our 2022 budget. Our membership fees in total collected as of today is 20,609, and with the contributions from Medicine Hat and Lethbridge, if the invoices are both approved, would be 33,591. With our total annual expenses of $78,000 budgeted this year, which includes contribution towards an economic impact analysis, and I'm going to get into that in the presentation, but wanted to share that we have had multiple contributors towards our economic impact analysis. Highway 3 Twinning will be contributing $11,000 towards that, out of our budget, excuse me, $10,000 towards that out of our budget. Department of Transportation is providing $10,000, and then we have multiple contributors contributing between 2,500 and 3,000, and those contributors are the Community Futures, Lethbridge, Tabor, Medicine Hat, Fort McLeod, Crowesnest Pass, Alberta Southwest, and Peaks to Prairies, Palliser Economic Partnership, Invest Medicine Hat, Economic Development Lethbridge, the Potato Growers of Alberta, and Alberta Sugar Bee Growers. And that brings us to being $975 short of the PricewaterhouseCooper proposal we've accepted, and that we can take out of our budget as unaccounted for. So, having got through the dollars and cents, I can roll into the presentation, and some of you have seen this presentation before, but for the new members, I'm gonna try to fly really quickly through some of the background. Basically, the association has been, oh, we can go to page two, thank you. The association was formed in the early 70s as a tourism association, and then went into an economic development association, and then into the Twinning Association that it is today. It grew to incorporate a large number of southern Alberta municipalities advocating for the twinning of Highway 3 from Tabor, sorry, BC border to, to, it says Saskatchewan there, but it really should be Medicine Hat. Our board currently includes every municipality along the corridor between Medicine Hat and Crowesnest Pass, with the exception of MD of Willow Creek and Barnwell. Next page, please. So it's important to understand the stages of twinning, things don't happen quickly. The only area that is not actually studied right now from the Department of Transportation is Pekanee Nation, and we, we did lobby, and were able to acquire funding or get the Department of Transportation to fund the functional planning study for Pekanee Nation, including the terms of reference and all of that, so we're pretty excited to see that There is a lot of locations that require planning, wildlife protection, traditional lands, grave site sensitivity, most of that is in the Crowesnest Pass area, increasing the cost of that area. Engineering and design happens after the functional planning study, many, many people look online and see the, the functional planning study roadway projections, and that is not the firm engineering. Step four is obviously utility and right of way movement and the purchase and acquisition of any lands along the corridor. Recently, the Tabor-Tibberdet section, we are approximately 98% through all of the land acquisition, and design engineers, the design has been completed, and the engineering has gone out to the RFP, and we hope to have that selected by the Department of Transportation by September, and get moving on the actual construction of the roadway, which is step five. So it does take some time to get the roadway actually paved and open. Next page. So the government perspective, this particular government perspective, is that they would like to see agreement on any of the areas. We are asking for twinning of the current roadway, and the current functional planning studies are for a freeway system. We are also asking to twin the road in sections rather than funding to do the whole thing as, in one budget cycle, and to make it more cost effective. So, next page, but I think she stepped away. Oh, love it. Thank you. So we've been pretty active, we completed, the Highway 3 Twinning Development Association completed their first strategic plan in 2018, which brought on hiring myself as a part-time director of advancement. Basically, I'm your lobbyist, and I maintain the operations of the association. We finished that strategic plan pretty quickly, there was only some items that were, we were unable to complete due to COVID, but we completed another strategic plan recently to give us some guidance into the near future, and our work plan for 2020 is well underway. And part of that was the economic impact analysis, which we have now put out an RFP and engaged PricewaterhouseCooper. Please note, in the third paragraph, it does say Albert, Southern Alberta MLAs, and that should be MPs, so I apologize for that typo. We are currently working with the National Trade Corridor funds and hope to be meeting our new Minister, Department of Transportation Minister Panda. Next page. So the, our plan is to continue to collaborate with our associations in addition, in addition to adding more stakeholders. We are also wanting to diversify the financial burden by having membership stakeholders, sorry, stakeholders pay a membership. And we have been doing trade shows this last year, we've had four under our belt so far this year. This promotes us to community and citizens so they understand what the status of twinning is and who the association is. Next page. So I basically have already really covered most of this information on what we've been doing for 2022, that we're well underway in 2022, and our new 2022 priorities for the stages. The National Trade Corridor, unfortunately, the Department of Transportation did select different priorities than what we have suggested. We are awaiting discussion next month with Department of Transportation on some of the rationale behind why they made those decisions. So how do we get there? I think, again, I'm getting a bit repetitive, and I do know this is in your package, so I'll try to fly through this. Basically, we're just looking to continue support from our municipalities to continue our lobbying efforts, both provincially and nationally. There has been really good progress, and for anyone who has been a councillor, been aware of this association for a while, understands the large, leaps and bounds we've made since, since 2019, including the twinning of Tabor-Tibberdet. Next page. So our goal is to align with the government's strategic economic priorities, whichever government that is, and we are going through some changes, so that is going to need to have some attention to that with our new ministry and our new, perhaps, premier and our new government with the election next year. We want to support economic development along the corridor and are, by supporting our stakeholders along the corridor, which includes industry and municipalities, and increase safety for all of our travelers on the corridor, visitors, tourism, and local commuters. Next page. A long list of our successes in the last two years, and I am now gonna close this section just by asking, next page, that you do go ahead and approve your membership for the 2022 year, and invite up councillor.
Well, thank you, Victoria, and Mayor and council, just a delight to be here with you this afternoon, and just basically, on, on a lighter note for a quick second, I, I do want to thank Mayor Higgins for coming out to Coldale on August 6 for our parade, and as Chair of our parade committee, we're delighted to have you, and possibly as the first mayor in many, many years, coming out to Coldale, and as reciprocal to that, our mayor will be attending the Hoop Up Days Parade in August as well, so we're just delighted to be partners and, and working together and collaborating, so that's, I just wanted to throw that in as, as an aside, and thank you so much for, for all your hard work behind the scenes and in, in the public here. With our, with respect to Highway 3, of course, as President, I'm, I'm just really encouraged by the support that all of the municipalities along the corridor have towards the work and the project in and of itself, and of course, how industry to date is, is partnering up, and of course, our agricultural community has really stepped up to the plate, and of course, as we know, the GDP of southern Alberta's certainly been dependent and dependent on the work in agriculture and the agrofood industry, so, you know, fortunately with these rains that we've had this year, it's been a real blessing to, to see the crops be more fuller than in years past, and so we're, we're, we're anticipating a really positive year again, and with your support, the economy of southern Alberta will be growing, and what we, we've learned and known through, the way people travel is that twinned highways are really the ideal form of transportation, and as you know, single lane travel is, is much more difficult. We are already hearing lots about how the stretch from Tabor to Medicine Hat, and even from Fort McLeod to the border is really difficult. The 24 kilometers of passing lanes that were, were implemented or put in in 2005 during the Klein years, really were good for their times, but with the, the growth in southern Alberta to what we're, where we see it today, those passing lanes do not do justice and are not safe anymore, so twinning Highway 3 will be a, a real testament to how we see southern Alberta unfold in terms of the economy and, and where it's going, so people will, in terms of tourism and transport, and of course, economic development, we know that twinning is really the, the critical point and the piece of infrastructure that will be important for all of southern Alberta. And if, are there any questions?
Excellent, thank you very much for that, very wholesome presentation, appreciate that, have seen before, but it's always a great refresher, thank you very much. I am not seeing any questions in the queue, so with that, we will read the resolution, thank you very much.
And again, I'd like And again, I'd like to thank you for your representation with Councillor Palladino on our board, and of course, previously with Mayor Spearman and others.
Thank you very much. I do have a resolution from Councillor Palladino, Highway Three Twinning Development Association 2022 Membership. Be resolved that City Council pay the 2022 Highway Three Twinning Development Association municipal membership fee in the amount of $6,500 funded from council contingency. Further be resolved that City Council direct administration prepare a budget initiative for the 2023 to 2026 operating budget deliberations November, at the November Economic SPC meeting for ongoing membership in the Highway Three Twinning Development Association for years 2023, 2024, 2025, and 2026. Councillor Palladino.
As you heard, this is a request for the annual membership fees of this association, which I am a member of, and I will call a question unless there are any questions from my colleagues.
I do see questions or debate. Councillor Carlson?
Just a quick question, Your Worship, if I may, through you to Mr. Matthews. We've been spending a lot of money out of council contingencies, so I do appreciate the thought of putting this as a budget initiative, so it's budgeted for. What's left in our contingencies?
Your Worship to Councillor Carlson, as of today, we have 114,500 still remaining in council contingencies.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Higgin.
Councillor Carlson, any debate? I would just like to add comments that I think it's extremely important that we continue to support this initiative. We are often, I mean, the community, I'm sure, will think, well, this is Highway Three Twinning. What really do we have going through our community? But it's important. We're the Western Canada's premier food corridor, and of course, we understand the importance of our regional development. So I think this is a fantastic initiative, and I hope it continues forward, so it definitely has my support. Councillor Palladino? Questions been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Thank you. All right, I am going to vacate the chair. I don't know if we want to swap, or we'll swap the chair as the next official business resolution is coming from myself.
We are switching seats because Mayor Higgin, this is his official business motion, so I'll be chairing this part of the meeting. So we have official business motion, item 6.1 encampments.
Not sure if we want to read through that or ask for any questions. First of all, I do have debate, but I didn't know if there's...
Vanessa, can you put it on the screen, please? Thank you. I'm just waiting for it to come up on the screen. Okay. We have it up on the screen, so encampments, 6.1 official business, whereas encampments continue to be on the rise in Lethbridge, whereas encampments pose a safety risk to both the individuals living within them as well as the rest of the community, whereas creating a safe and viable community continues to be a priority, whereas a compassionate approach to our homeless population also continues to be a priority. Therefore, be it resolved that City Council allocate up to 20, 200, 230,000 in one-time funding from corporate budget contingencies to assist in the administrative and policing funding shortfalls to expedite compassionate cleanup and establishment of encampments. Therefore, also be it resolved that City Council allocate up to 470,000 in one-time funding from corporate budget contingencies for administration to move forward with more suitable solutions for encampment concerns that go above just encampment cleanup. Therefore, be it also resolved that a local community task force be struck to gather key partners together for a community view of these complex issues. Therefore, be it also resolved that City Council write a letter to seniors and housing, community and social services, and mental health and addictions, requesting the formation of a provincial city of Lethbridge Working Group to allow for collaboration on medium and long-term housing and homelessness solutions that will ultimately address encampment issues. Mayor Higgin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is, this has been, I'm going to say a concern, because it has been a concern over the past quite a few weeks, and it's been something that has been, I would admit, one of the largest initiatives or largest concern that we felt in our community as far as emailing communication that I receive on a daily basis. The encampments. I've had the opportunity over the past few months to discuss with our provincial partners as you realize that provincial, the provinces is the ones that we usually lean on when it comes to housing and addictions, and it's those ministries that are supposed to deal with the concerns that we have like this in our community. And working through those things, there's a lot of different meetings that go on, and I just, I wish I could, I could, I can't stress enough, I suppose I should say, on the meetings that are happening on a regular basis. These meetings are ongoing. We understand the importance of being compassionate, but we also need to understand the importance of having a safe community. I know when I ran for the position I'm in now, I ran on a community, a safe community, as many of us did. And it's something I think it's extremely important that we offer that to our citizens. We owe that to our citizens to have a safe community, and we owe that to those that are more vulnerable in our community, have a safe community. These encampments are not safe. They're not safe for the community as a whole, for the citizens, for those homeless citizens that are on our streets. They're not safe for tourists that are coming, and for that reason, I brought this forward, this resolution, because I think we need to address it, we need to address it right away. And so I'll, I can open it up for questions.
All right, Councillor Parker, you're first in the queue.
Thank you very much. And so my question now won't be so much to your resolution right now, I just, I want to show kind of a cause and effect of why we're here. So I'm going to throw out the questions, and I'll send them out to the acting city manager. So right now, people ask me, well, why can't you guys just go out there and clean that up? Why can't you send the police? Why can't you do certain things? It just doesn't seem right. So my question to you is, can we have these individuals who are putting up tents on public space, can we have them removed based on the current laws and current powers that we have?
Thank you for your question, Councillor Parker. I will refer that to Michael Fox, Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Councillor Parker, for the question. I think this is a complex issue. It's a very complex answer, and I'll probably rely on our solicitor, Mr. Lowen, to answer some, and some questions we may not be able to answer may have to be directed towards the Lethbridge Police Services. It depends on which bylaw, where the encampments are set up, and what processes are put in place. The biggest issue is, is that we have a shortage in housing with temporary housing, transitional housing. We have a lack in shelter space for all of the vulnerable population, so that adds to the complexity of the situation. But as for the regulations, bylaws, and the law goes, I will refer that to our solicitor.
And this is important because the way the media, I want to make sure people, the community who's watching this understands what we can and cannot do. So that's why I'm asking this question. So please, Mr. Lowen.
Under existing laws, people ultimately could be removed from public places where they're prohibited from being.
My question, okay, go ahead, go ahead, please, then I'll follow up. Go ahead.
That's the simple, broad overview answer. As I think you could tell from Mr. Fox's answer as well, the specific facts of every situation are also critical to evaluate what can happen and on what timeline and what specific legal tactics would be utilized in different situations. So private property versus public parkland versus some other kind of property.
My follow-up question, that is, if something were to occur, something more dramatic than what we saw a few weeks ago in regards to the shooting, could the city be liable that we did not clean that up and we allowed something like that to occur when technically it's not permitted on city grounds?
Generally speaking, I would say no. The occupier of land would not be liable for deliberate criminal acts that happen on their land. It's very challenging to answer these hypothetical questions because in real litigation, the devil is always in the details, but that's the general proposition at law.
My last question for right now, thank you. My question to the mover is, it says the $230,000, da-da-da-da-da, policing funding, this is help for police funding shortfalls to expedite compassionate cleanup and establishment of these encampments. So what is going to occur then exactly by us allocating this $230,000 that the community can expect in return?
Thank you very much for that question, Councillor Parker. I've had the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Fox to go through a lot of this initiative and what the costs would come from, so I'd like to turn that time over to Mr. Fox.
Thank you, and thanks for the question. In these situations currently, we address every encampment or placement of a tent or anything like that within three to five days. We try to do it as soon as possible when we get the request, which sometimes is within 24 hours. And what we do is we do outreach to the people that are facing homelessness and try and get them into the services that are provided. When the services are full, it's harder, and we try and direct them to other services, and we work with lots of stakeholders within the city. We talk with other communities, the provincial government, federal government, to try and come up with a positive solution for these people. What the $230,000 does is allow us to do this daily with all different encampments. It's about $195,000 of that money is for wages alone. So you, most of the asks today would be to enhance our response and our presence in these encampment areas. So that also includes cleaning up areas. In one of the recent encampment responses, we cleaned up 5,670 kilograms of refuse and also 282 needles. So at those encampments, we also do daily cleanups. So this allows us to make sure of the safety of the occupants, also allows for us to watch for criminal activity. Part of this is also with LPS, and when LPS is with us, they are watching for criminal activity and aggressive behavior, and they support us in this. Like I had previously said, this is a very complex issue and needs a wide variety of people at the scene to address it. So we do try to do outreach as best as we can right now. We just believe that if this does pass, we will be able to enhance that to a higher level.
You have other questions, but I don't want to, I'll hold off. Thank you.
Councillor Carlson?
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this forward. I know it's been quite a burning issue in our communities, so thank you. I appreciate Mr. Fox's response and the city solicitor, because I know that we have an encampment removal strategy coming forward this fall, but I guess we'll sort of have the information after the budget ask, which is somewhat challenging, but I do understand the pressing need. Question around, Mr. Fox started to answer it a bit about the $195,000 going to wages. The numbers that were presented in this OBM are fairly specific, so I'm assuming there is a budget attached or a breakdown of what the costs will be and what those funds will be utilized for and who will be overseeing those funds. And I'm just curious, how does council perform their oversight role? We're being asked to give $600,000 with no budget, no breakdown, no reporting. I'm just, I need to understand how I am to perform my oversight role on that these funds are being used effectively and are actually achieving outcomes? Because I think I heard one of Mr. Fox's first issues was lack of housing and lack of space for folks to go to, and I don't think this is going to alleviate that. So I need to know how I'm supposed to perform my oversight function without knowing how these funds are going to be dispersed or utilized or what the reporting mechanism is going to be. So if someone can help me with that.
Through the chair, I can try and answer the question to the best of my knowledge, and then maybe ask Mr. Matthews to help me if he has any further information to add. When the mayor approached us with some of these ideas, we put together a quick classy estimate. So if this does pass, as we start to look at current service providers, additional service providers to carry out different functions, we could bring that back to an SPC in September to make sure that council sees the full expenditure of the dollars. I believe in the motion, it was up to the dollars. Again, we did get these numbers together quite quickly, but they are based off of current service agreements and some quotes that we were able to get together within the last week. So again, it is a classy estimate, but as we, if this does pass, we will bring back more information and updates to council as we proceed.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that. I think it's incumbent on council to know how the dollars are being spent and that they're being spent in the most effective and a manner that, effective manner and a manner that meets the outcomes we're hoping for, rather than just shuffling the issue around our community. So I need some comfort in that. The other question is, and I think I misspoke, I think I called it a $600,000 budget, I think it's a $700,000 budget. Mr. Matthews, or through you, Deputy Mayor, through you to Mr. Matthews, what is available in contingencies at this time?
Your Worship to Councillor Carlson, inside of the corporate budget contingency, there is, bear with me one second here, $956,453 that's still remaining in that contingency fund.
Okay, and that, so that will leave us 256 till the end of the year, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, I've got some more questions, but I'll hop out and allow my colleagues time.
Thank you very much, Councillor Carlson. Up is Councillor Campbell.
Thank you for the information. Couple of questions to whoever wants to answer it. The definition of compassionate cleanup, can you take me through that process, what that means, who's involved with it, and just kind of explain the whole process? If you go to a site, can I hear from someone on that?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. So a compassionate cleanup is more or less, we notify the encampment of that we need to clean the area for safety reasons for the people in the encampment or for public. And when we enter the encampment area, we usually enter there a couple of days prior. We do intake, so that's trying to find services for people that are currently in there, offer intox and detox to anybody struggling with addiction. We have our DOT service available to transport people to different services. We work with the Bud Tribe Health and try and locate some people in services if they're available. So again, we take time to make sure that people are getting to the services they need, and then we notify them that we do have to clean the area, and usually that does mean having to pick up tents, move area, so we can thoroughly clean the area of biohazards and other refuges in the area. We also offer people, if there's space in the shelter, rides to the shelter, or other locations, if they have family, friends, anything like that. So what we do is take that approach first, and we also have... Um, and we also have, uh, um, LPS is usually there to, uh, make sure that if there is any, um, issues with, uh, uh, legal issues, uh, with breaking the law or legal activity, that they can deal with that. So, uh, we do try and take a multi-pronged approach on this. Again, we, even this morning, our, our team in, uh, Community Social Development was speaking with, uh, the City of Kingston in Ontario and they're dealing with a very similar process. And, uh, if you look at their website and our website, the process is almost mere. And so we are in communication with people about compassionate cleanups and, uh, we try and take, uh, a respectful way for the citizens and also for, uh, people facing homelessness.
Thank you for that. I, and you know, I know this is a multi-layered problem that we have and I just wonder, uh, with the number of, uh, homeless encampments that we have, is that a result of the homeless shelter that we have right now? Is it, is it to capacity or is it a, a situation where some members don't want to go to the homeless shelter for various reasons? What's, what, what can you give me on that?
Um, thank you for the question. It is a, that, that is a, a loaded question. Um, but, uh, no, uh, we did notice a significant increase in, uh, in people facing homelessness when the transitional housing was shut down earlier this year. Uh, in discussion with our partners, the province, so they are, uh, they are motivated and they are trying to, uh, set up, uh, more transitional housing in our, our community and they are trying to do that as soon as possible. Um, but that, so that is one, one aspect. Uh, we also have, uh, different types of housing and the continuum of care, um, that, uh, that we do. So there's lots of results on why people end up being homelessness. Uh, we do see an influx in the summer times when the transient population does move around city to city sometimes. But the cause is, there's lots of research out there that, uh, says that there is different reasons why, uh, the influx is in different cities at different times of years. And I don't have the specifics on, on that for you.
And one more question, if I may, Madam Chair, just, um, to, to the mover about, uh, setting up a committee, um, to, uh, the provincial government and the City of Lethbridge, uh, on a co- collaboration on medium and long-term housing and homeless solutions. Who do you anticipate as being those people you want to contact in, in, particularly in the city? Uh, is it, uh, uh, agencies that we already know or are we gonna, are we looking to kind of ask for a community support? Who, who are you looking for?
And that, that group can, yeah, can be the agencies currently that can help and that support and you're saying, talking more of, of the city?
Yeah.
Okay. So I want to go back here a little bit. Uh, I had the opportunity of, of, I mean, this is moving so quickly. So anytime that I could reach out to our city manager and, you know, uh, request information from him, remember there's time for that comes, to come back, reach out to, to, uh, Mr. Fox and of course, he does his due diligence, goes out and gets the information, brings it back. There's all these different people in different, uh, different rooms or different locations at all, all given time. So to have everybody together, we did this last week and, uh, it was, it was, uh, uh, very enlightening that the information that was, was spoken, everybody could hear. So it's not, I'll get the information from Mr. Fox, I'll pass on with council, council may have a question, go. Getting everybody in that same room is so important because you, you leave there knowing what that common goal is, that common goal of compassion, common goal of respect for the community members out there, anybody, if it's those that are homeless and those that are, are residents in the community. So that, whatever that team is, I'm always open to discussions and I've spoken to Mr. Fox that we'll definitely set up those that need to be at that table and are most important to be at that table.
Is, is, do you, do you have a timeline? I guess that's, that's.
Yesterday.
Yeah.
Well, and you know what? Furthermore to that, uh, Counselor Campbell, uh, speaking to the one with, with the province as well, it's again, another important group to have because as I mentioned before, I'll reach out to the province, I'll, I'll go up and I'll meet with different, uh, representatives there, I'll bring back the information and, and it's just, it's back and forth. We can just have that group all together and there, we're again, on that same page as we move forward. So that's what's important with both of those two, uh, last, uh, parts of the resolution there.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several questions and also recommendations, but I'll start off with the first question, which will be to, uh, I guess, Mr. Matthews, uh, in the, um, in the motion, it speaks in terms of, um, that this is a, uh, a shortfall, that this is a, uh, funding $230,000 to assist in the administrative and police funding shortfalls. As this is not a budgeted item, how does that constitute a shortfall?
Uh, your worship to Counselor Milton Hope, um, I believe it's just because in this regard here, what they're saying is because it's not a budgeted item, it's, there is no budget there available, so it would be a variance in the budget if we, if we did this. So just, I, I, in the wording of how it's worded here, um, the way I'm, I'm reading it is that because there's a zero budget and a 230 expenditure is looking to be a shortfall or a variance, um, of that. So this is, this funding would be brought in to shore that up.
So you understand the terminology here, shortfall actually means a variance?
That's the way I'm taking it.
Okay. Fair enough. So as long as we're speaking about the same, the same issue. Um, the second question that I have is the, um, further on down, we talk about the establishment of encampments. Isn't the purpose of this second OBR, uh, to remove encampments as opposed to establish them? I put that out to Mr. Fox through the chair.
Um, thank you for the question. Um, for the OBM, I would have to, um, defer to the mayor on that one, but, uh, my understanding is it would be a controlled encampment site. Uh, this would be an area that has similar services to a shelter. Um, and, uh, so we would have, uh, uh, for lack of a better word, a bag check or, uh, security check, uh, when people enter the area, making sure no illegal items are brought in. Uh, we would have, uh, 24/7 presence of, uh, people, there would be healthcare workers, uh, and, uh, people that could do outreach, uh, within these areas. Um, again, the, the, I have never seen one of these work, but they haven't had full services, uh, like is proposed, uh, hence the cost of this one is again, in that controlled encampment site. Uh, it is again, it's $395,000 roughly in just wages.
Ninety-five.
Oh, sorry, did I read?
One ninety-five.
Oh, that's for the 230, so that's in the first one. The second, the second, uh, part is for the 470 and 395 of that is, would be wages in, in, in that aspect. Uh, I have been notified by the service provider and the province that, uh, they don't believe this is a good idea, uh, but we also did have the discussion where, uh, the, the current situation isn't a good idea either. So, uh, there is two sides to, to everything. Um, I haven't seen one of these work, but with these, uh, added resources, um, I believe we can, uh, try and have a more successful, uh, controlled area. Now with a controlled area, you can't force people to enter, uh, or go there, but there would be a, a space where people could be safe and have services.
That's helpful. Um, that's all the questions I have at this point, uh, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to make a recommendation in regards to the, uh, the resolutions at some point, uh, to split those resolutions into four parts.
Okay. We'll, uh, entertain some other questions first and then we'll come back to that. Thank you, Counselor Middleton Hope.
Thank you.
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I, I think I need the same clarification as, uh, Counselor Middleton Hope. The, uh, first, um, actionable clause, uh, talks about $230,000 to establishment of encampments. Uh, is that a typo, an error? Am I reading that wrong? It says compassionate cleanup and then establishment of, of encampments. So I, I had the same confusion.
The est- sorry, is that from, from myself?
Go ahead.
And, yeah, establishment of encampments. So that is to put it in an area. Again, this is something, and I know as, as, uh, Mr. Fox had mentioned, it's, by doing this, it's, it's something where they call your, you're going to sanction an area for these individuals to be able to set up an encampment. Now, were the concern, sorry?
The 200, I, I, I just need that clarification. The 230,000, uh, is, is that to establish the encampment? Mr. Fox said the budget for that was 400,000.
A- actually, Counselor Carlson, I would remove this. Prior, we had that full amount. We didn't add in that second part of the resolution for the 470, that other operative clause. So my apologies, that should be the cleanup of encampments. And Mr. Fox, if that, that's correct, we did add in the second operative clause and so we still had that wording at the beginning. So that would be, I will definitely have that removed, uh, cleanup of encampments. And that fits in with what we were talking, correct, Mr. Fox? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Perfect. Thank you. That, that clarifies that for me, uh, quite a bit. Uh, if I can ask, uh, my next question's around, um, uh, I'm struggling with the task force and, and the working group. Are they the same? Are they different? I, I'm, I'm unclear and I'm unclear on what their purpose is and who they report to and who's, who's, who, who's running it.
Thank, thank you for that question. Counselor Carlson, this is, it's, it's something that is, is really a, uh, we threw this, or I threw this resolution together very quickly because realizing that we're not going to be meeting until September. We needed to get something out there. So some of these little, uh, parts to this that are, are confusing to, to be quite honest, the mover himself, some of these costs. Now, the, what I had figured out for, for the, uh, the local group, the local group would meet as we've, we've already, um, I guess in a, in a non-structured way, we've already done that. But this group would actually present to, or somebody from that group would present to this, the second group, which is the provincial group, which is the, the, you know, the Minister of, of Housing, the Minister of, of Addictions, the Minister of, uh, Social Services. That's what that group would, would, uh, present to. It's, it's just to get this, this ball rolling and I know, I, I wish there was just more details and I do apologize for that, but it's just, it's timing. It's, we weren't going to be meeting till September and we had to have this in for this particular meeting here and, and then just all the comments that are coming from the community, I just wanted to make sure we got this started. And hence the reason of putting up to these dollar amounts. I totally understand and I've, when, when I see those dollars, I, I am one that doesn't like to spend many dollars and I'm sure many people in the community understand and have seen that for me over the years, but currently what we're doing just isn't working and so we need to do something else. So for that reason, I sat down with Mr. Fox, his team, and have spoken with the, the provincial government partners as well as trying to find out what we can do to mitigate these concerns in our community.
Okay. Thank you. So, so the local task force, um, we don't know who would be on it and what their job is other than a, a community view on. I need more information on that, but, uh, I'll leave that for now. Um, so if I can ask, again, the 700,000, $230,000 of that, and just from my clarity, is being asked for to do encampment cleanup, basically remove encampments, correct?
Yes, with the majority of it being labor, right?
Thank you. Um, and, and because we've had some experience with removing encampments and when we remove one, it pops up a block or two further away. Um, and so all you're slowly doing is moving the problem, uh, around the city. So I might understand that then the 470,000 is to establish a permanent encampment somewhere?
I would call it more of a transitional, I'm sorry, Counselor Carlson, is, is I know that, uh, housing doesn't happen overnight. We know what's going to fix this. It's that transitional housing, that's what's going to fix it. Doesn't happen overnight, so it's an interim to get those individuals, the supports and stuff they need, but at a established location. Because you're exactly right. They, as soon as we take them down in one area, you saw what happened over, uh, on the, on the north side there, that just by the shelter, they came down, fucked up in Civic. If you take from Civic, they're, they're going to go somewhere. These people need a place to go, so they're going to be, end up somewhere. So for that reason, it's, it's, uh, the second part is to actually establish something where we do have, most importantly, a safe environment. If it's, if it's, uh, nurses, if it's, uh, community support, workers, uh, security is there to make sure that everything is, it's, it's safe. And so for that reason, is that second operative clause.
Okay. Thank you. And now I, I think I understand it. I, I guess I, I'm, I'm just struggling with, with approving 700,000 that I haven't seen a plan, I haven't seen, uh, any oversight of how the dollars are dispersed. So I'm, I, I'm asking a lot of questions because I, I need to wrap my brain around this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Parker? I have Mayor Higgin next or, yep, okay, Mayor Higgin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, question I have for our, our city solicitor, if I could, um, through a city manager, acting city manager to a solicitor. Um, there's, these encampments, if we're putting in, into a specified location are considered, uh, for lack of better words, a sanctioned location, I guess you would. And, uh, some of the comments and stuff that we had when we were chatting was that they're not, they're done more so in B.C., they have not been done in Alberta, um, or less in, less of them in Alberta. But could you please share, uh, some of the comments that, that, that we shared regarding how this, uh, why they, how they could be successful and why they're not successful? So we talked about some security, some moving, moving for, for safety, uh, reasons. Could you share some of that with us, please?
I'll do my best and if I miss the mark, just, uh, keep asking me questions. The, the idea behind sanctioned areas for encampments really comes from the, the history of the case law in this regard and, uh, I know we, we've discussed it in the past, but there's a, a well-known case from Victoria where one of their bylaws was held to be unconstitutional for violating section seven of people's right to some form of shelter. And that's a very specific factual finding and in different provinces, there's different levels of provincial support and so it, it, it's, oh, it would be oversimplification to say that that just broadly applies everywhere, but that section seven right does need to be kept in mind. And essentially what that is, is, uh, human beings are entitled to have, you know, have some kind of shelter as one of their fundamental rights. Now, one of the findings in those cases was, uh, where there's not sufficient shelter in other services, like home, like shelters like we have, then it may be unconstitutional to enforce a bylaw prohibiting somebody from putting up a tent at night and taking it down in the morning so that they had some protection from the elements. That has led to a, a number of model bylaws throughout British Columbia where they have something in content very similar to our parks bylaw or other parks bylaws in Alberta, but they would specifically identify parks, uh, that where somebody who meets all the requirements that have sort of been discussed by the courts could temporarily erect, uh, a location to camp in. So that becomes the sanctioned area. And this kind of ties back to Counselor Parker's earlier question about liability. Once we as a government, uh, identify a place to go, then it's more likely or there's a closer connection in terms of what liability is. So the risks that we might be creating by directing people, uh, to camp in close proximity and, and all in the same place have to be mitigated by the kinds of, uh, services that Director Fox was outlining, whether that be nurses, practitioners, some form of security, lighting, uh, safeguarding, uh, you know, the, the area from, um, maybe people who, who have, uh, negative intentions towards the occupants, those kinds of things would mitigate any liability that the city or other operators would have in setting that up. I hope that is what you were getting at.
No, absolutely. And just the reasons why, as we've heard, why some, uh, decide against that if they don't have the, the proper procedures in place, I suppose. So thank you very much for that.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Uh, thank you, um, Deputy Mayor. Um, this question would then be to Mr. Fox in regards to, let's not lose sight of what is actually occurring in these camps. We have, uh, violence, we have biohazardous materials that we're having to clean up. Uh, can you give us some insights into the last cleanup that we went through at the encampment over at the Civic Centre and the, uh, volume of debris that was removed along with the number of needles that were also removed?
Through the chair, yes, I, I can give you, uh, the stats, uh, for the last cleanup. It was, uh, 5,670 kilograms of, uh, refuse and 282, uh, needles were collected. Uh, that, that was during the time of the encampment, uh, removal. We do keep, uh, waste bins around the area to make sure that, uh, if they have things to discard, they can discard those. We didn't track the weights or, uh, that debris. We also have, uh, daily, uh, um, cleanup of needles around the downtown and other areas, uh, that, uh, we do find needles. So we, that is an ongoing process and it has been in place for, uh, several years now.
Would it be safe to say that you would agree with, uh, the management of these encampments rather than the mismanagement of these encampments, particularly in light of the violence that we've seen here and in other locations across Western Canada?
I believe, uh, that, uh, any encampment, once they become entrenched, is, uh, a dangerous situation for, uh, uh, the people in the encampments and outside of the encampments. Um, so in the absence of housing or a better solution, um, I do believe that, uh, a managed site, uh, would, would be better on a temporary basis.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Not sure who can answer this one. I'll, I'll pose it, neither the mover or, or Mr. Fox, who seems to have done a lot of work, can perhaps help me on this. Do we have a location? We budgeted or spit-balled $470,000 in one-time funding for the temporary encampment. Do we have locations or thoughts or places or, it seems a fairly specific number? So I'm, I'm just wondering if we have a plan? And, and again, it goes back to my struggle, is I'm being asked to raise my hand up or down for something that I, I have no idea what the outcomes are, what the locations are, what the parameters are. Are people going to be locked in? Are, I know with our homeless population, some of them have been moved into supportive housing and immediately leave because they don't want to be there. And so I, I'm really struggling with a lot of this, if it's going to actually guarantee solutions. And I'm just, I'm hoping someone can help me if they're, do we have locations? Do we have a plan? Something that can help me raise my hand to this, to, to, for certainty?
Through the chair, I, I can give a, a rough summary of the conversations that have happened over the last about five or six days and some previous work. So this, this idea of controlled encampment did, has been around the area for much longer than I have actually been with the city. And alls we've done is more work on looking at what parameters would actually help it to be successful if we actually entered into something like this. So the current location that we have been, just started conversations with the service provider in the building and the province, and this is over by the current shelter site. It's backs onto the CP rail. There's already a fence that goes along the CP rail side. There would need to be a removal of the stairs and the side fence, brought in a gated entrance into it. No, we wouldn't lock anybody in, but there would be controls on entrance and exit, so we can make sure and maintain the safety in the actual area. We cannot say that people will actually use this site for sure. What we can say is we would try and provide a safe area for people seeking shelter with many of the controls in the shelter. Now, I would like more time, though, to discuss this with the service provider if council wants to move forward in this direction. The current service provider at the shelter has a lot of concerns about doing a controlled encampment. There has been some failed attempts around the province and in other areas. Again, they didn't have the same amount of resources and 24/7 controls around it. So I would like to have more conversations with the province and the service provider around that. But that is where we have put the costs together. And again, it is a Class C estimate, and it's up to, I'm confident that we could do something to this. It doesn't solve the wintertime issue. Again, having an encampment location in the winter, when the temperatures plummet, it, it causes other issues. But one benefit at being close to the shelter, there is showers, there is food, there's other services there. And by providing services out in the courtyard, we'd be able to better maintain the safety of the individuals in the encampments as well.
Thank you for that. Help me if my takeaway was right. We, we can't enforce the use of it. So there's, there's no guarantee that us creating this temporary location is going to solve any issues. The folks that want to misbehave aren't going to be want to be in a controlled area. Did we look into any other options or any other thoughts that came forward, like just providing more security around the current encampments? Because we, we talked about needle cleanup in the encampments, and then you talked about needle cleanup around the city. This is not going to eliminate the needle cleanup around the city. People are still going to be wandering and, and indulging in their unfortunate habits. So did we look at any other options that may be more effective and go to where the, the problem actually is now and, and provide better security or some, something on-site where people want to congregate? I, I'm reminded of when you're building and designing places, don't put any pathways in until a second or third year when you go to see where people actually walk. And then you can see the pathways in the grass, and that's where you need the pathway. Is there any way to control or better security and safety where people currently are?
Through the chair, I'll do the best, and then if any other administration or council wants to weigh in on that question, they're more than welcome. That is the, the biggest question, I think, that's out there. Most experiences with an encampment, when it is wherever the people feel like having a setup, it becomes entrenched, and that's where criminal activity sets in. And there are lots of examples. There is examples of news articles that are out there on Calgary. There's a current in Edmonton, I believe, and there's also, Wautoskewin is currently undergoing something in that. It's hard to remove that. I know Kitchener-Waterloo, Ontario just had an encampment cleanup where they had the court injunction to do it. And again, it was because of the incite of violence. And they, these areas have tried security around the areas, and they have not been solutioned. And that, that has happened across the country, so I don't think there's an easy answer to that. Again, what, what we're trying to do is walk that line of public safety and safety for people facing homelessness. And the biggest solution would be housing, i- is what studies have shown. But again, to just provide security around the site that's currently there, I don't think we would change some of the behaviors in there and some of the safety concerns around the area. Now, I can't be for sure on that. I would have to rely on LPS or somebody else to speak to the actual safety, illegal activities, what they've seen, what they've heard in that area. I can only speak to news articles I've read and other jurisdictions that I've talked with similar directors or administration that is facing these complex issues. But every time, it, it comes back to housing. You look at, I think it was Tucson, Arizona, where they sunk $10 million into a Housing First strategy. Anybody that came in and was homeless, they put into a, a house. And if you were out on the street, because you could have shelter, that, that's how they determined it. Now, again, the legal ramifications in Canada of doing something like that, I don't know what they would be. But again, these are things we look at all the time. But again, the biggest question is how can we provide a safe shelter in a safe area for people to congregate?
Thank you for that, because I just, maybe it's, it's that I... I'm Scottish. $700,000 for a temporary Band-Aid solution I think could buy a lot of spaces, even if they're temporary spaces in apartments, hotel rooms, et cetera. So I, I am struggling with that. I'm hoping my colleagues have some further questions, because I need some time to ruminate. Oh, maybe I'll just ask a question if I can, Deputy Mayor, through you to, to the mover, your worship. Just a, a question to you around timing. I do understand that your concerns about, it's now, I, I guess it's a month before our next meeting. Not to say we couldn't call a special council meeting if necessary. I'm hearing lots of questions from my colleagues, especially from myself, around approving a budget without any idea of how it's actually being utilized or what the oversight would be or the reporting on this. I'm wondering if, if you feel it, it's necessary to move today or if there's more information that can give council comfort, that can be gathered, and then if a special council meeting needed to be called where that information could be presented, we could do that. I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts on, on that.
Thank you very much for that, Counselor Carlson. If you would, I would be welcome to a, a motion to postpone to next Friday if you wanted to do something like that and have a special council meeting. I don't know exactly. I'd ask city clerk how, how that is done, but I, I, I have similar... Again, I've already mentioned this. I'm the mover, and I have similar questions. But I'll tell you, I, I just keep going back to, I don't have all the answers. None of us have all the answers, but what we're doing isn't working. And so sitting down with, with both the police and with, with our, our community services and with, with a few of the, the key stakeholders in our community, came up with, this could be a solution. And I'm saying it could be, and that's horrible to say, and I know a lot of people are really concerned when I say could be, because it may not be. It's just, again, what we're doing now isn't working. But if there's something you want to put off, I know in a week's time, there's probably a lot of information that we could get, but I just don't want to put it off till, till September. So I would definitely entertain a friendly on that one, if you wanted to do a postponement on, on that.
Well, thank you, and I'd, I'd appreciate that, because I, I just need a bit more comfort and a bit more knowledge about what the expenditure is going to achieve. But I'll, I'll hop out for now and wait and see if any of my colleagues have any further questions. Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, and I think it's important that we have these questions. This is probably the most important issue on today's agenda, so if we have to go a long time on this one, I don't mind asking the questions, getting the answers. First of all, compliments to Mr. Fox and his team. I know this is a very difficult one. It's, it's not something you can just go in there, how do you solve this, and just pull out, check off the box. This is very complex, so. First question, if you have, why didn't, why didn't we have encampments last year? Why is it this year? Have you, why is that? It's just a kind of a question. Can you help me get my head around it? Why this year?
Sure. Through the chair, last year, all year, we did have encampments, just not in the locations over here. So there, there have been. As we clean them up, they move different areas. Last year, they were mostly isolated around the shelter by the Kitchen Centre, Lealta, around that area. So those, those businesses there have been dealing with encampments in that area for over two years. So this year, actually, there was other measures taken by the, by the businesses to deal with their boulevards and et cetera, that moved encampments to other locations. So since I have been here, encampments have been here. Once encampments become entrenched, they seem to grow. So do I believe the numbers are more now? I do. But we will have our pick count later in September and understand where we're sitting with people facing homelessness.
Thank you, and I can remember the past years, they were kind of underneath the bridges. You see the encampments, those one-offs and all that. Obviously, you, you go talk to these people at risk. Do you ask them, where are you from? Why are you doing this? And what is the answer you get?
Personally, I do go and, and talk with lots of people. And I know a lot of the team in Community Services does, do, and other people around the community and LPS. Some people just have nowhere to go. Some people have a, a lower acuity and are facing homelessness and maybe aren't even sure where their house is or where it came from. And that usually comes from addiction and other, other issues that they're facing. So again, that's why we have people doing outreach on a daily basis to touch base with these people and try and help them find out a safe place to go and to get housed. So I, I hope that answers your, your question.
My third question, this is the one the community asks, and this, I need an answer from our city solicitor on this. The citizens say, why can't you folks just go, as a city, go and clean up that site and not allow that to occur? From what I heard, we cannot do that, can we? Or can we?
It's not as, it's not a, it's, it's a good question, and it's one that doesn't have a satisfactory answer. Yes, we could. We could do it in some cases more quickly than in other cases. But we, we could, in theory, at some point, get a court injunction like the communities in Ontario that Mr. or Director Fox has referenced. A court order like that would have a police assistance clause. We'd coordinate with the LPS and, and, and go and do that. I think the practical implications of, of a solution like that, that everybody's struggling with, is when you squeeze one part of the toothpaste tube and move the toothpaste out of that part, we know it goes somewhere else, and we don't know how to manage that.
Who makes that call?
The corporation.
Corporation, okay, so does the city manager make that direction? Or does the city manager need direction from council to make that decision? Is it just the city manager that makes that decision?
The city manager could make that decision.
And my last question for you, and this is the concern I have, is if we approve these funds and we have a designated area, we're not guaranteed that these folks are going to use it, because they may say, I don't want to be around these folks here. We got some issues. It could be gang issues, something like that. You know what? You guys can put all the nicest places, you can put the nicest washrooms, and you put shelter and all that. They're going to say, pardon my, screw it, I'm going back over here, because I like it here. And so then what?
Through the chair, that is the question we wrestle with on, on doing this. And that is also why a lot of areas have not followed this path. However, the more restrictive you become in an area for safety of the people there to mitigate risk, then, then more people will use that area. So I, I don't know if I'm being confusing in that answer, but it is a difficult question, and you are correct. So that, that is why administration, this has always been an idea floated around. But again, we, we have difficulty sanctioning an area and bringing that with evidence of it working in other locations. So that's why administration hasn't brought that forward to, to this time.
And my last question, I appreciate the answers. I mean, I like the answers, but I like the answers in that you're telling me the facts and the truth, which I appreciate. Have you guys spoke to the organizations, for example, Streets Alive, those organizations? Hey, what do you think? Well, how would you go about this? Have you talked to the faith community? Have you talked to people that deal with these people on a daily basis for the last 20 years? Have you talked to those organizations?
Community social development has been engaged with all stakeholders for, long before I've been here, and looking for solutions to these issues. Now, one that usually comes up is having a sober shelter, transitional housing, and housing. So again, back into that continuum. You know, the province has, as early as yesterday, said they are working on seeing how much funding they have left. They could offer and start up transitional housing again, and if they could help fund a sober shelter in Lethbridge. Currently, the stats are showing there's between 40 and 60 people that could benefit from a sober shelter. So again, that's, that's another conversation. Previous council had directed administration to get together a social service integration group, and that group came up with several recommendations on trying to deal with some of the, the housing issues and how to integrate some of the social services into Lethbridge. I believe in September, they will be coming forward and stating their findings. It was held off because of, we were going to be having the Community Well-being and Safety Committee that is no longer moving forward. So that, now the SSIG will come to an SBC and talk with SBC about their findings. In the meantime, administration has went through some of those recommendations and provided more information to them on what can happen, timelines, stuff like that. So provided more information to them on that. But, so in short, yes, we have discussed with all the stakeholders that we could, and we had several groups and committees formed since in my time, and I know there was ones previous before my time. Thank you very much.
Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Fox, for all of your answers. The one thing we haven't thought about or asked questions about, from previous studies, we know a large number of the homeless population or the unhoused population have mental illness. In some cases are operating at a, you know, the level of someone four or five years old. What does moving encampments do to someone in that situation?
Through the chair, I think from research, it shows that it is traumatic with different environments for anybody with a high acuity. So there is no easy solution to that one, again, although there is services that we try and put those individuals into, and we do outreach. uh, put those individuals into, and we do outreach with those individuals, but they are the hardest to house without permanent support of housing with 24-hour wraparound services. And again, we continue talking with the province about that type of housing in Lethbridge and surrounding areas.
And would you say from your research that every time we move an encampment, that it makes them harder to trust us when housing might become available?
I'm, sorry, can you repeat that question? Sorry.
So, this might be a bit of a, a stretch to ask, but would you say that every time we move encampments, would it make it more difficult for them to trust us when housing becomes available and we try to actually house them?
Um, that, that's a difficult question to answer, because sometimes when an encampment becomes entrenched, the safety of those individuals is, uh, put at risk, and also, uh, sometimes some criminal activity can exploit that individual in different ways. So, uh, in one way, when we're cleaning up an encampment, uh, sometimes they set back up right where we just cleaned, um, sometimes they're moved to another area, so, uh, again, making sure that the biohazards and other safety concerns are, are looked after in an encampment, and that encampment does not stay entrenched i- is an important factor. Now, the effect on, uh, individuals in there, I believe, depends on the day and how they're feeling, the reaction, a lot of those things that I, I, I don't have the knowledge on.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Counselor Middleton Hope?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, this is a question to, uh, Mr. Fox. Based on your research, would you not, uh, would you not agree that to do nothing simply perpetuates the circumstances? That the cycle that we're now witnessing commences with violence, where we have physical violence, biohazardous materials are picked up on a regular basis, we have ongoing victimization in the camps, that this moves on to a period of defiance towards authority? Eventually, we have confrontation, and eventually, beyond that, we have occupation. Is your research consistent with what, uh, we have seen across North America with these encampments?
Um, all my research I've done has shown that any entrenched encampment comes with all the issues you've, you've mentioned, um, and, uh, as of yet, there hasn't been a solution to, uh, um, solve encampments.
And we may not be solving the problem, but we're have, we're trying to have an impact, is that correct?
I, I believe that's what the mover's trying to do.
Thank you.
All right, I have no other questions in the queue, um, did, I'm going to just open this up, did anybody have any further questions that haven't been answered yet? All right, seeing none, um, Counsel-
Sorry Deputy Mayor, I was trying to get my stupid buttons to work. There.
Counselor Carlson?
Uh, thank you, I, I'm just wondering through you to either the mover, uh, or, uh, city manager or designate, I'm assuming Mr. Fox, since you fielded most of the questions. Uh, if council did postpone this, um, and I'm not saying for a month, I'm not saying till our, our next meeting, because we can call a special meeting whenever needed for a, a particular reason, but if council did postpone this, um, and hearing a lot of the questions from myself and my colleagues about, um, how is the, how are these dollars going to be utilized, um, um, how is it going to be, how are we going to procure these services, and maybe we can just amend existing contracts, I'm just unclear of, I have no idea where these dollars are going to be used, how they're going to be used, and who's going to be, uh, providing the oversight to that, usually my job. So I'm wondering, if council did postpone this, and I don't think we need to set a date, to give you and your team some time, um, is it possible to bring back an action plan, a, a, a budget, a, some outcomes, some pros, cons? Something to sort of give some, some sort of comfort, uh, for us to say, yes, I can buy into this, I can raise my hand, because we're going to make a difference. Is that a possibility, or do we just have to go on a hope and a wing and a prayer?
Um, through, through the chair, I, I think, uh, we can bring back a report, um, that outlines, uh, what the, if, if council wants to move forward with these types of initiatives, we can bring back, uh, where, where that is. Um, the, the difficulty is if we want to get, uh, contracts executed and work done, uh, right away, we would need that, that direction, so then we could bring those back at the same time almost, just because, uh, um, sooner than later, we will be in fall, and, uh, then, then we'll be into winter, so if council wants action to happen now, then, uh, reporting back will take time. Uh, we do have a lot of information gathered that we could provide to council, um, but, uh, again, it will just take, uh, time to get the report, and I'm not sure then how long it would take to get to council, I'd have to talk with, uh, clerk's office to see how long, uh, uh, we would have to get it, the report approved and, and through the process.
And, and thank you, I'm just, I'm hearing that you've got a lot of the information, all the questions we're asking around budget, you, there seems to be, uh, at least, what did you call it, Level C?
Yeah, I, I'm using, uh, uh, more of an infrastructure term than a, a social service term on that, but, uh, it's, it's, again, it's, uh, it's, uh, within about 20%, I would say, uh, of accuracy. Again, we would have to finalize, who are the service providers, can we extend grants, um, flush out the ideas more to make sure that, uh, uh, we know who is doing what. Um, we do have a bare bones, uh, budget, uh, when the mayor, uh, approached us with this, we did, uh, uh, do up several, uh, uh, options in, in, um, in a sheet, but it was more for a year, uh, type service on a yearly base, um, and then we tried to pull numbers out of that quickly to, uh, to form, uh, to help the mayor with OBM to have a number there. So, uh, again, we do have a lot of the information, we would need a time to formulate it and then get it through the process to get approved, and, uh, we could report back.
Do you know how long that would take? Put me on the spot, Mr. Fox, I'm sorry.
No, no, um, I, I understand the pressing, uh, and the, the highlighting of this issue in the community currently, and, uh, I think our, our staff could put together a report fairly fast, um, as soon as early next week probably, uh, to establish a, a, a brief report on it, um, with the information that we've gathered today, uh, different articles and some of the research that, uh, was done, and then also, uh, that type of information, uh, for council to look at, um, but I'm not sure how long then the, the clerks would need to set up the, the meeting, and also the process to get the report approved, again.
Okay, thank you for that, and, because one of the things I'm struggling with is, is I think I heard you say that, that part B, the $470,000, there's a lot of questions whether that's possible, or if the current provider has an interest, uh, so I would hate to say, yep, here's, here, here's the money, um, and then start seeing a bunch of action take place that leads to nothing. Um, and so, I, am I misunderstanding that characterization of it?
Um, for, for the controlled encampment space, uh, there would be further discussions having to happen with the province and the current service provider in the area. Now, the service provider only has a lease over the shelter space, does not control the outside, so we could get an additional service provider, but that would also increase the risk of liability for two service providers then, and we'd prefer to have more discussion on that. Um, the $230,000, uh, we could enact a lot quicker, because a lot of it is services we already provide or smaller contracts that the procurement can happen quite quickly, and, uh, that, that would be easier to administer, uh, more immediately, and it would be more a less enhancing the current, uh, service that is on our website, so, nothing would be changing on the process that we're taking with encampments, but the frequency would be more with, uh, $230,000. So, uh, that, that's, uh, that, that would be the difference between the two. The one, uh, correct, there would have to be a little more planning, there's actually some infrastructure work that has to happen there, and we would have to talk with the current service provider and continue to talk to our stakeholders and the province.
Okay, thank you, um, so the first injection of cash will be just business as usual, but a bit more enhanced, um, or frequency of cleanups, I guess, uh, and that just basically will push them around the community, uh, until we can find a more permanent solution. So I, I need some time to mull again, thank you.
Counselor Middleton Hope?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm just simply sitting in queue for the debate.
Okay, um, thank you then, we'll just hang on to that one second. Does anybody else have any other questions at all? All right then, yep.
Madam Chair, sorry Deputy Mayor, just a, a quick question on, on the task force and the, I think it's, I lost the, uh, the resolution, I think it was the Community Task Force and then a Provincial City of Lethbridge Task Force or Committee. Um, are we reinventing the horse with this? Um, we have the SSIG, I think it's called, uh, we had the Community Wellbeing Safety, um, Committee, um, that unfortunately, uh, we didn't move forward with. Um, are these the exact same folks we're going to be trying to get onto this task force? Do we not already have these folks in place?
I, I do not see it that way, I, I, with, with who I have, and furthermore, I want this cleaned up before 2030, so part of it is, I, I want to make sure that the, the, uh, and, and you know, part of them could be from this group, I'm not saying they're not, not part of it, but if we're going to pass this off to this committee, you're, it, it's time, and it's nothing to do with those that are members of that committee, but it's just getting them together and getting that work done, we're going to be next year. We've seen how it's, it's happened thus far, and that's why, uh, council had, had the decisions they did here over the past, uh, couple of months ago with keeping us into that, uh, that, um, Standing Policy Committee, so it's just a time thing, if, if we want the time to do it, I have, that's, that's one of the, one of the options, but I personally wouldn't recommend it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Any other questions before, at all, before we move into debate? All right, moving into debates, um, Mayor Higgin, did you want to open?
I'll say for close, thanks.
Okay, Counselor Middleton Hope?
Um, thank you Deputy Mayor, uh, what I'd like to propose is that we divide, uh, this motion into four component pieces, so the therefore's would be individually voted on, uh, and I'd like to recommend that, uh, as a part of that, that we vote on them independently, or individually rather, uh, and I'd like to also propose is that we, we go forward with the strategy as outlined by Mr. Fox, uh, bring us an action plan in the future that tells us how you're going to be spending the money, but we need-
Hold on one second, we need, uh, we're going to discuss the four motions, or, moving this into four motions first, before you start moving into the rest of debate?
Sure.
All right, um, so, Mayor Higgin, um, did you want to address moving this into four separate motions?
And it's a motion to divide, and it's, and, yeah, he can do that emotion, it doesn't need, I don't need to be part of that.
If I may, with the new procedure bylaw, um, there's no motion necessary, any member can ask that a motion be divided, it's their right, so, um, if Counselor Middleton Hope would like that, we'll have four separate motions.
So exercised.
Okay, then what we'll do is, we'll start on the first one, the first part, the, the first motion we've got then is, therefore be it resolved, that city council allocate up to $230,000 in one-time funding from corporate budget contingencies to assist in the administrative and policing funding shortfalls to expedite compassionate cleanup of encampments, because we were removing the and establishment, correct? Okay, um, anybody have, do we go straight into debate? Okay, let's go into debate about that, um, Counselor Middleton Hope, did you want to start?
No, I'm sat, well, I'm satisfied that, that Mr. Fox is, is, has provided us, Mr. Fox and Mr. Matthews have provided us with as fulsome an explanation of how these funds are going to be, uh, A, procured and B, spent. Uh, I'm also satisfied that if they bring back an action plan in a week from now, uh, that will, uh, perhaps to a certain degree, ameliorate those who have concerns about, uh, how these funds are going to be spent, and I share those concerns. But I want to move this forward, and so I'm prepared, uh, to, as I indicated, to, to split this into four different, uh, component pieces and vote on it as said.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, and, uh, I appreciate all the questions being answered, and, um, I will not support the $230,000, I think we should, uh, what should I say, enforce the laws that we have in place, and there is consequences, consequences to that, and people argue that we shouldn't do it, but I think that we have bylaws, we have regulations in place, and we have the enforcement, uh, privy to us to do it, and I don't think we should allocate $230,000, I think we should, uh, because I just think, uh, put your blind eye and throw in some more money into, I think we have to say no, this isn't going to be tolerated in the community, and some people will say they all, people have all the right to do it, and I don't think it should be allowed, not in public space and not in public parks, and so, for that reason, I don't want to put $230,000, because I think we have the existing guidelines and bylaws in place, and some will may argue in the community that we, there's not enough teeth in it, but I think there is, and so I will not be supporting it.
Acting Mayor Croson?
My apologies, I should have had my hand up earlier on this, because I was going to bring forward a motion to simply postpone this all, um, for the next couple of weeks, two weeks perhaps, because I do not feel I have the correct, enough information to vote on this today. Perhaps Ms. Hilford can explain if, um, if I'm at the right time on this, can we bring forward a motion to postpone all four?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Croson, yes, a postponement motion does take precedence, so you can put that forward now, uh, just, just would ask where you're going to postpone it.
Um, if we don't postpone till September, to a special meeting in August, or till September, whatever my colleagues wish to see.
Okay, yeah, that's in order now, if you'd like to put that forward.
Okay, that would be my motion on the floor then.
All right, so we have a motion now to postpone this to a special meeting in August or an SPC in September, is that correct? Acting Mayor Croson?
Yes.
Okay, um, do we have debate around that? Counselor Middleton Hope?
Well, I, I, I don't agree with postponing it to September, I think we need an answer, and I think the sooner the better. Uh, if the will of council is to delay it, I would suggest that we delay it with the smallest amount of time, or the, the shortest amount of time to the next meeting. So if that's this Friday or next week, uh, does that give, uh, administration enough time to respond to the questions that have been asked in regards to a more fulsome proposal or an action plan, uh, that can give us some answers to how this money is going to be spent, and how this money is going to be overseen by either council and/or the administration?
Uh, through the chair, if, uh, if it was, uh, next week, I'm sure we could, uh, to, could get, uh, something together. Again, I would just have to, uh, ask, uh, I'm not sure on people's vacation schedule, so I don't know how quick the report would get, uh, approved, but I think we could have some information and the report ready, uh, early next week, so I, I, it's just about the approval process for the report and the information before it comes to council.
Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, um, I'm just, I'm just thinking, um, in, in the, in the delay, um, if there's a direction that we should put in, in the, uh, in the delay to, as to specifically what kind of information we want, or is that just, uh, assumed from what all of the questions we've asked from, uh, Director Fox? Am I making any sense of? Sorry, what's that?
I can speak to that.
Okay.
I can speak to what I'd be just doing the postponement, it is to get the information that has been outlined on what we actually hope to achieve, how the money exactly will be spent, and, so that we actually then would have a report back, so we could say, this is what you promised, this is how the money would be spent, and this is what may or may not have been achieved.
And I would be in full support of that, uh, rather than just saying we're postponing, so that's, that really helps my, with my decision, thank you.
Madam City Clerk, did you want to add to that?
Yes, if I may, Counselor Campbell's correct, a postponement would bring the report back exactly as it is with no additional information, so a referral would be asking administration to gather more information on the report, so I believe a referral is in order, um, Counselor Croson, if you're amenable to that?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we refer it to a special meeting, and the meeting time to be determined?
Okay. Counselor Carlson?
Oh, I was, I was just going to second Counselor, or Acting Mayor Croson's referral motion. So probably refer back to administration, and then once the information's ready, the mayor can caucus with council and call a special meeting with 24 hours' notice, correct?
Yep, correct.
Okay, so I don't know if Deputy or Acting Mayor needs a second, but I was in the queue to make the same motion.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need a second on this one, but thank you.
Okay. I have too many procedure bylaws floating around in my brain. I'm too old.
We don't want to reinvent the horse.
Mayor Higgin?
A question that I have is, is, I'm okay with the, sorry, the referral, referral motion. What I'm not okay with is September. If this was done, and I want to say this week here, but obviously to get some of the information, even at the high level that I had for the end of this week for a special meeting, or early next week, I just, I need to, I need to find out if I'm going to support a referral, and then I caucus later and nobody can meet till September, I would not want to support it at this time. So I just, from, to the, to the, Deputy, or sorry, Deputy Mayor, Acting Mayor Croson, if, if I was to amend this to be no later than, what's next Friday? Hopefully sooner, but by, that would be... No later than August the 5th.
Could, could we say August the 9th, since I'm having surgery next week?
I, that would be extremely fair for you, or earlier this, this week, but I don't believe, high level, you could get that. Director Fox?
I, I'm not sure I could get all the information from finance, legal, and everything ready for council and the public.
How many days would you, what's the minimum?
Madam Deputy Mayor, can I ask that we take a five or 10-minute recess so that administration can discuss and get back?
Yeah, let's take a 10-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, we're calling the meeting back to order. Councillor Croson, Councillor Carlson, have we got you two both online again?
Hello.
I'm here.
Okay, perfect. All right, so right now, we are back and we've discussed the deferral more, the, the deferral motion of Councillor Croson. We do have some extra information here that Mayor Higgin is going to speak to before we move on to the vote on the deferral motion. Mayor Higgin.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to mention to Councillor Croson, or Acting Mayor Croson, we do have information on number one, which is the 230. So prior, I was just wondering if you would, with the additional information we have and the breakdown of that 230, if 2, 3, and 4, or, or 2 and 3, or any part of it, you would, you would mind referring everything with the exception of number one?
Sorry, why wouldn't we just do all? Because to me, it's all one, I mean, I know it's been separated, but why wouldn't, would there be a difficulty with delaying number one?
It's just, to me, if you're asking me, or I can pass it on to Mr. Fox with myself as the mover, I just want this done sooner than later. And if we have the breakdown for 230, that's shown to council, and that's decided on, we can at least start the movement going forward right now with the additional information coming at a later date.
And respectfully, I see, I see them all as a suite. I know they've been separated, but, and with our budget not having to be worried about until the end of the year, if we're spending money, we still have time to bring it back in a week and a half and still have the conversation because the money can be spent and we can still fill it in at other points if necessary.
Okay, that's, it's up to you. I just brought that forward, but you're definitely, if you want to continue on with 1 through 4, that's fine, too.
Yeah, I would like to do all of it.
Okay, Councillor Middleton-Hope.
I'm just wondering if I could have some clarity from Deputy Mayor Croson in regards to, so are you suggesting that administration go forward with the plan absent funding until the opportunity of, I think it's next week or whenever, to come back with a more fulsome explanation of how those funds are going to be spent? Did I, did I understand that correctly or not?
We've already had some encampments closed, so administration is bringing back better plans and information on that. What I'm saying is that I don't see a reason that a delay is, will affect anything because if something has to be done, it would be done. But I'd like to do all of these at one time, just have a clean conversation about them all with the better information.
Okay. Could, could we ask Mr. Fox if that's doable?
Through, through the chair, I, the only part is, is some of our current outreach teams and the, some of the teams that helped clean up the current encampments, it takes them a while with resources where if we could have additional funds to get another outreach team out there, that would, that would help. That would be, we're doing, putting out the outreach more on a 24-hour basis instead of within three days. So we do have contracts that we could execute on, and also for the safety of some of the outreach workers, part of the 230 budget is around security to allow the security to, for a company when they feel like there is a threat, instead of having LPS there. LPS usually, when called in, we usually have to give them 48 hours for when we're entering in somewhere where we need their presence to make sure that they can schedule someone in, and usually that is done on overtime.
Through the, sorry, just through, through the chair to Mr. Fox in that regard, the, the $230,000 that you've identified in terms of where those funds are going to go, the document that you have in your possession, is that going to change in the next week and a half?
The document for the 230, no, it won't. There may be adjustments as we sign contracts or understand the full need, whether it has to go to security or LPS on those fronts, but the spreadsheet that we have currently would be the, the basic rundown of it, explaining where the funds would go.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, Acting Mayor Croson.
Having heard Mr. Fox on that, I would be fine separating one from the others if that is the will of the rest of council.
All right, so then we're amending that deferral motion to defer items 2, 3, and 4, but to move forward and discuss item 1. Is that, am I hearing you correctly, Acting Mayor Croson?
Yes.
Okay. So our deferral motion has been amended to defer items 2, 3, and 4. Acting Mayor Croson, did you want to close on that?
No, I think my meeting has been clear. It's simply, I've heard from my colleagues, they need more information, so I would like to have a referral motion to move forward to a special meeting to be called when the information is available.
Okay. We'll call the vote on, yeah, Mayor Higgin?
Clarification, I do have a question here. So when it is available, I think we heard that it could be available within, you said within a week, so the end of next week? Is that correct?
Through the chair, for the 470 and on the shelter area, I'd like to have further conversations with the current service provider and the province. So if it wouldn't be next week, it'd be the following week that I could have information back for the 470. I just, I'd like to further clarify with the service provider and the province.
Thank you. And then, so, so just, sorry, Deputy, or Deputy Mayor, gosh, you should be Deputy Mayor, I keep calling you that, sorry. Acting Mayor Croson, so will this be just a special meeting that I will call when that information is available? Is that what I understand correctly?
Yeah, the meeting would be called by yourself, and Mr. Fox would let you know when the information is there.
Perfect.
Within the next week, too.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
All right, I see Councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, too. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm, I'm struggling with this because I was of the opinion that this was a holistic motion because going in and having even a compassionate cleanup doesn't solve any issues unless you have someplace to put people. It just moves the issue to a different area. And so I was hoping to hear about the entirety of the plan before we start going in and piecemealing things off. So I just need, I just need some clarity because I think Councillor Parker, in his earlier debate, sort of posed the question, we have the, the tools and the means to enforce these things, or are you saying, Mr. Fox and, and your worship, that we're broke? We can't do any enforcement, do anything right now without this money?
Through the chair, enforcement, I can't speak to. I did talk to LPS about the amount of overtime they're currently incurring, and in the last three months, they incurred roughly $70,000. So what I am trying to do is talk to different security companies and try to, instead of necessarily having LPS there, having a security or some agency there that can do it at a lesser cost. But as far as enforcement and actually enacting it, that I would have to defer to the city solicitor or LPS to, to speak to that, as I don't actually do the enforcement on, on encampments or the movement.
Got you. Thank you. I guess that's where I was struggling a bit because I'm just calling up the motion again, I believe the motion talks about funding LPS out of this money. Is that?
Through, through the chair, yeah, correct. It would be, I have additional $50,000 in there. Now, however, if security works well, we may be deferring some of that $50,000 more towards security, but my understanding is that that is the rough budget number that LPS provided. I'm trying to lessen that amount with ongoing conversations with different companies.
Right, and, and this is $230,000 for one compassionate cleanup?
No, this, this would take us for three to four months of ongoing. It's enhanced, it's, it's more, currently, we have stepped up how often we are doing outreach. If we get a call, we try and touch base in the last couple of weeks, and we've had quite a bit of success around neighborhoods and other smaller parks. There's only one area where we haven't had a lot of success, but even at that, the last compassionate cleanup at Civic Center area, there was eight people that were referred into care from that. So there was successes, even though they're small. And on an ongoing basis, we do have people accessing services and being removed from encampments. So these, the more we outreach, the more times we touch base with people, the trust is gained. And when the trust is gained, people are allowed to have other discussions and it can actually find services that may help them find their way out of, out of facing homelessness, or even getting them into treatment for altering, being addictions and, and also to mental health help.
Okay, thank you. And, and in your opinion, I'll ask through you, Deputy Mayor, to the city manager as designate, in your opinion, is this the, the best use of these dollars and the best solution at this time? I just keep going back to $230,000 could buy a lot of spaces for people. And so I'm, is this the best use of these dollars at this time? And I ask that, not having the information that I keep being told is available, but I don't have it about the budget and the costs and the plan, and so I'm just, I'm throwing it back and saying, I need a recommendation from my administration.
Can, can we send the budget out to the councillors?
We've, we've got the motion to defer right now that we have to decide on before we can go back to one to take a look at that budget. So I'm just going to suggest here, Councillor Parker, did you have anything to say with regards to the motion to defer?
Yeah, I do, okay, on the motion to defer?
Yeah.
So I'll have to ask questions for the first part.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we still have to decide on the motion to defer items 2, 3, and 4.
Okay.
So you know what, let's, let's call the vote on that, and then we're going to go back to item 1, and we can start that all over, asking questions and, and move on from there. So, motion to defer, items 2, 3, and 4. Councillor Croson, did you want to close on that?
I called that question already.
All right, so we'll call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Councillor Carlson, you were in favor to defer? We didn't see your hand go up.
Uh, sorry, it was up to refer, correct?
Yeah, refer 2, 3, and 4.
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect, all right. We are moving back now to discuss, therefore be it resolved, city allocate up to $230,000 in the one-time funding.
This is where I am now. This is my question now.
All right, Councillor Parker.
Thank you very much. And my, obviously, in my debate, I really wanted to just go in there and enforce what we had, follow the guidelines, kind of a hard line down, but I was told that there is a cost to that. And what, so if we don't allocate this $230,000, we cannot go and do that then? We need these resources to make that happen.
Through, through the chair, if there isn't any legal activity that LPS is made aware of, and they will take action on it. Having LPS there does, for encampment cleanups, is for, usually, they're there for a full day. It's, the, the cleanups usually be, some of the bigger cleanups we've done has taken two days. So that is at overtime rates, and usually there are two LPS officers at that, at the site. The more time we give LPS to get organized, to have people there, usually it is the downtown LPS unit that, that is, is present at that time. If we can rely on security forces instead, it would be less costly, but we would be able to use security forces. There's other areas where we could use security as well, and not just in the encampment areas, but if we weren't doing a cleanup at an encampment or outreach wasn't feeling threatened, security may be able to go around and talk to people that are setting up in other locations about the bylaws before they're at the tents or anything are erected. They could may, inform them of the, the bylaws and the meanings of the bylaws. So there is twofold, but in short, your questions, if there is illegal activity, LPS has stated they will take action.
Here's why I ask this question a different way. I appreciate it. If we don't give this $230,000, what happens tomorrow, or in the days to come?
We continue with the action that we are currently undertaking.
Which is?
We would do outreach when we have the resources available to the areas. Usually, we'd be outreach within three days to a tent or to somebody that is setting up, and we would offer them the services. If we plan an encampment removal, we will give 48 hours notice, we will arrange with LPS to be there, and we will organize the services to do the outreach and stuff for the two days before. We'll organize clean sweep to be there on the day of the encampment removal.
So $230,000 would get things cleaned up, expedite things, so the people in the surrounding neighborhood could feel a lot better, correct?
That is the intention of, of the $230, is to enhance the services in the areas to where we can't necessarily get rid of encampments. We would have more outreach, more cleanup in encampments, and also focus on other areas of the city where sometimes people are branching out.
And if injunctions are needed, that funds could be used, such as that could be used to help for injunctions or something like that? Am I correct?
Correct. That would be part of the process. If the city decided to do court injunctions or take action, then we would use the funding from that area.
Thank you. This information is great, really helps out. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councillor Parker. Councillor Carlson, before we move on to your questions, Ms. Hilford, I'll get you to put the budget that we have up on the screen, and she's also going to email that budget item out to Councillors Croson and Carlson so that you can see that. Thank you, Ms. Hilford. We'll just give that a minute to come up here. All right, Councillors Carlson and Croson, you should have received that by now, so we've got that budget up there for three months. Councillor Carlson, you have a question?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I can see it on the screen. I guess, because I was sort of viewing this whole thing as a holistic process, just going in and tearing down encampments, just moves them along. I do like the outreach that we're doing, et cetera, but I think I misunderstood the answer to Councillor Parker's question. I thought Councillor Parker asked, without this $230,000, what would happen? And the explanation I heard from Mr. Fox was all the things that would happen, the 48 hours notice, the tear down, clean sweep, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I never heard what would happen with the $230,000. Was it just more often?
Through the chair, yes, that is correct. It would be, instead of trying to do it in three days, we would be outreach immediately as soon as we receive the, the call, not within three days. So it would be more action, more regularly, with more teams out on the streets talking and dealing with the encampments.
Okay, thank you. With this $230,000, pardon me. Okay, thank you. With this $230,000, pardon me, how speedily would we see this enacted?
Through the chair, we have already outreach and got defined scopes of work that are similar to some of our other contracts. And we have received three quotes on those. And we believe that through the procurement process, that's all that's needed on that. Some of the security costs are current contracts that are by the hour. So those can be enacted immediately, although we are exploring other security companies as well that may be able to do other types of enforcement and have been around encampments for a longer period of time. So we are exploring those currently. So we, as we're paying out of the security fund by hour to a currently contract, it doesn't mean that we may not step into a different provider if we find somebody that has more experience in these situations could enact. So we have, over the last week, done some investigation on many of these items, and we can enact fairly quickly. The clean sweep is already enacted, and that would just be a more enhanced service, providing for more funding. So those costs, we are pretty sure that we could have something in place, probably even as soon as next week.
Okay, thank you. And this would be for a three-month contract, correct? I'm just, because I've looked at this holistically, and I just can't separate them in my brain. If we start going in and tearing down camps, people are just going to move unless they have someplace to go. Which is, I keep being focused on, $230,000 could get us a lot of spaces, even if they're temporary, for people to actually go, rather than just moving from one park to another, or to an alley, or to the Cooley's. So I'm struggling still with this. I'd rather refer the, all parts of this, so we could vote on it holistically. But I'll hop out for now. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Carlson. Just one question to follow up on Councilor Carlson's questions. The OMT caseworkers, we know that CMHA is having trouble hiring for that right now. Have we explored, or are we exploring another service provider for that particular line item? Just because we know that that's something that's an issue to hire for right now.
Correct, we went out and got quotes from three different service providers. And there is one that is able to enact it immediately.
Thank you. Councilor Middleton-Hope?
Thank you, just two comments. One is in regards to security, the act in defense of real property. There's no enforcement powers there. So let's not provide a delusional perspective that security is going to resolve this issue. You're going to be paying for police services, and that's going to cost you money. So let's not kind of confuse the issue. The second is, you talk in terms of three days. There isn't an encampment in this city that has been taken down in three days. These encampments are up for eight, 10, 12, 14 days. So let's be realistic again in regards to the impact that this is having. The $230,000, Mr. Fox, as I think you've articulated, is to deal with the problems that we're experiencing today. The $470,000 which has been deferred for further examination is to look at a long-term solution. Is that correct?
Through the chair, the $230 is to enhance what we're doing right now. And sorry if I miscommunicated, that was when the outreach teams first enact with an encampment is within the first three days. It's not being taken down within the first three days currently. So if that was my fault, if I alluded to that, that is not what is happening currently. It is, we do outreach within, in the three days. And usually it does take about a week to enact and take down an encampment currently. Or, and not always are we successful in that. With security, you are correct again in that aspect is, if there was any illegal activity or any bylaw enforcement, security would have to call LPS in those cases. However, some of our service providers may feel safer entering into an encampment or around an area to ask for outreach with a security presence, where they, a lot of security officers are used to dealing with de-escalating situations. So you are correct in that. The $230, sorry, I'm getting numbers confused in my head here, is for three months. The $470 is looking for to the end of the year solution. So again, it's not a solution for the cold weather or an ongoing solution, because the funding for that would only take us to the end of this year, is what we're anticipating. However, working with service providers and the province, we are looking for other solutions to that. And then that's where administration appreciates the time to talk with the service providers and see if there is something else that's out there that we could do to help in that respect.
Great. Do we have any other questions at all?
Surprise.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Councilor Carlson, are you able to get to your button?
Yeah, I found it, thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
Perhaps it'll help me. I may have a motion, sorry, Acting Mayor Crowson and Mayor Higgin, to refer this along with the others, but maybe somebody can help me. I just need to know, so the LPS response to encampments. So when we phone them, they send us a bill?
No, no, they don't, but they do incur overtime charges. So I was asked to get a price on what it's costing LPS currently, and on how that funding would be allocated, I would have to defer to Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, so.
So, your worship to Councilor.
That makes a little sense to me.
Yeah, so, your worship to Councilor Carlson. So what Mr. Fox is referring to is that they would have, in this case here, they've given estimate of $50,000 of overtime costs that they wouldn't have, they'd have a variance on. So in this case, the money would be moving, or budget would move from, or funds would move from the council contingency to offset that amount in their operations. So basically what it's doing is it's within our overall budget, it's allocating funds out to their operations to make sure that they don't have a deficit they're incurring for those overtime costs that they're actually charged.
Okay, so.
So it's just that we don't double spend on our budget. It's probably the easiest way to take a look at it, we reduce the amount we would spend on the contingency, and they're spending that, those dollars now in LPS.
That's the easy way, okay. Yeah, all right, thank you. What are servicing costs?
I would just need a few minutes to get the full breakdown of what the servicing costs are. But I can, yeah, I would have to check, yeah. So just give me a few seconds, and I will get that answer for you.
And next up, the other questions are going to be signage and fencing? Where are we putting up fences?
So when we're looking at areas in parks or in city-owned lands, we do need some additional fencing to make people aware of the bylaws, or sorry, this is the signage. We'll need additional signage to make people aware of the bylaws if we are going to enact any enforcement. So currently, you'll see on some of the gated areas going into our parks, we do have signs that tell the hours of operation of our parks and when they're closed. And that refers to the bylaw and how we can enforce them. So that does help if we are going to enact a bylaw. The other part is also, there are some areas where if we put up fencing on city land or in parks, it may lessen the activity in those locations. So again, as a contingency, we have the fencing in there to be able to put up fencing if needed in those areas.
Thank you for that. Deputy Mayor, I'm not sure if it's an appropriate time, but I, just because I still have more questions than answers, and I don't even know what I don't know right now. I wouldn't mind referring this along with the others. I'll make that motion, see where it goes. It seems to me like it's a fairly quick turnaround, but I'm asking questions and I just don't getting the answers that I need. And I'd love to, and I understand, this was sort of sprung on administration. I would just, I'd love to get a bit more fulsome grasp of this. So I'll make the motion to refer similar to the other three items. And if I get shot down, I get shot down, but at least it'd allow me to make the motion to give me more time to think. So I'll make that motion. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to refer item number one to a special meeting of council to be called by the mayor when the information is available. So this is again, a motion to refer item number one. Did you, does anybody want to have any debate on that? No?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think I said it all in my ramble. Just, I looked at the mayor's motion, and I like that we're trying to take some action, but I need to understand exactly how it all fits together, and I need to know a bit more of a plan. So that's my only reason for asking. Thank you.
All right, so we'll call the vote. All in favor? Okay, we're going to do a roll call. Councilor Campbell?
Opposed.
Councilor Carlson?
In favor.
Councilor Middleton-Hope?
Opposed.
Councilor Palladino? Councilor Parker? Acting Mayor Crowson?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt-Rempel?
Opposed.
Mayor Higgin?
Opposed.
Lost, six to two, or two to six, lost. All right, we are back to the original motion of the $230,000 of one-time funding. Mr. Fox, did you have the answer to what the special services fee was for $5,000?
I have, I've reached out to some staff that I know that are still upstairs, and I'm just trying to find the report that I had on it on my computer. So I'm digging through files currently to get that answer.
All right, Councilor Carlson.
Thank you. In the meantime, next question, I guess, is about implementation of the plan. How speedily will the OMT caseworkers, was I correct in hearing that that's within days? That those could be activated? Mr. Fox?
Correct, we would probably take until next week to have it enacted, but that is correct. We have already got quotes from service providers trying to get the estimates for this. So I believe that could happen quite fastly. And the $5,000 is for waste and recycling, for our service fees for taking the refuse to the dump. So that was the $5,000 that was, it's interdepartmental, but it is a utility. So we do incur charges for that.
Thanks. If you go on Saturdays, it's free. I guess just, this will all be, because I didn't win on my other holistic motion, but in this, is it, if we approve this, and are we going to see folks going in and tearing down encampments tomorrow without the OMT caseworkers? Or do I have at least some comfort that the caseworkers, et cetera, will be there? Because just ripping down the encampments is not going to solve any problem. They are going to just walk 20 feet and set up a new encampment. Without those caseworkers, without the people doing the outreach, I can't support this. So do I have some comfort in that at least this will be done as a holistic one, so that we're not throwing away money just to move people 20 feet down the park?
Through the chair, all of our outreach, we have been doing outreach at the Civic Center on a daily basis until they felt unsafe. So as of today, they are doing outreach with an LPS officer, and that has been happening today. We put up signs today to do a cleanup on Thursday. And we continue to do outreach today, and we'll do it tomorrow. And then we will do the cleanup on Thursday. And LPS will be there present to make sure any illegal activity or any threats are dealt with.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. I appreciate that response. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
All right, does anybody else have any other questions? Any debates? Mayor Higgin, can I have you close on item number one, please? Can I have you open on item number one, please?
I'll save for closing.
And Councilor Parker, I think you have something?
Well, it's kind of like, you know, Superman can go backwards and go back and, back and go back in time and all that. Because, and thank you for giving me the opportunity, because now that I've seen the numbers on the board in regards to where that $230,000 is going to be allocated, I did have the stance that you've got to go in there and clean it up as soon as you can. And I've been told that you need the resources to make it happen, because they don't have the resources. And you answered my questions, that as soon as these funds, we can accelerate the process, we can get it cleaned up, get these sites cleaned up and all that. And I think that's what the community wants. That's what the community's been telling me. But there is a cost to doing this, and in a perfect world, we wish we wouldn't have to be doing this at all. But this is a cause and effect, and the $230,000 will help clean up that area, give the people in the surrounding neighborhoods some reassurance. And then if something, the camp goes somewhere else, there's funds there to help get it cleaned up again as well. So for that reason, I will be supporting it this time, knowing the information I know now. Thank you.
Acting Mayor Crowson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will not be supporting this. I appreciate the concerns of the public, and I appreciate why this has been brought forward. But all I can think about is where good intentions normally take us. And while I would love to support more outreach, taking away, you know, people's homes, especially when we don't have any place else to send them, is not something I can support at this time.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Crowson. I will be supporting this motion. As we've heard, entrenched encampments, they're not safe for any of our residents, those who are living in the encampments and those who are not. We need to be creating a safe community for everyone. And while we're not hearing or moving forward on the other three options at this time, we will be looking at those in the next week. None of this is ideal. None of this is a great position for us to be in. But right now, we need to provide a safe place, we need to provide a safe community. And I think at least this is a start of doing this. Mayor Higgin, would you like to close?
Thank you, thank you very much for this. And I want to thank all my colleagues. This was a long afternoon, but you know, with some great conversation, great questions, and thank you very much to all of you. It's not easy. It's a very, very complex issue. And it's, you know, I wish we had a magic wand, I wish we had that crystal ball. We don't. All I could say is, and I've said it numerous times here today, is, don't have the answers. But I know doing what we're doing right now isn't working, so we need to do something. And I think Councilor Parker had mentioned about, you know, we do have rules right now. We do have, you know, bylaws for our parks. But it's the resource to get people out there as quickly as we need them to get out there, and to work with these encampments and to pull these encampments down. It's, it may seem to many that it's, you're not being compassionate. But over the past few weeks, I want to just talk to a few different emails that I'd received. Starting with four tents here a couple of days ago, to 12 tents this morning, over 45 now in one particular area. A shooting in the area. That's not safe for anyone, as Deputy Mayor had mentioned. It's not, it's not, these areas aren't safe for whether you're homeless, or if you have a home, or those that are visiting our community. It's just not a safe area. It's been proven. We've seen this happen. I spoke with another business that's just close by the area, and they haven't had a break-in in over seven years. And they had a break-in, and they asked the person where they're from. He says that he resides at Civic Park. Broke in, took a bag of Twinkies and a bag of chips. Now, you know what? Food. We're saying, well, maybe the person needed some food. There's multiple different areas. Our soup kitchen does a fantastic job keeping those that are most vulnerable nourished, especially with the meals on a daily basis. So there's so much more to this very complex issue. And again, this, and I'll tell all my colleagues, we may get to the end of this and have to spend $230,000 and find out that it hasn't changed as much as we've wanted it to change. But if we keep doing what we're doing, we're getting the same result that we've had, which is not working. So with that, I thank my colleagues once again for all of the great conversation, questions, comments. And with that, I will call for the vote.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, can we do a roll call on that, please?
Absolutely.
Councilor Carlson?
In favor.
Counselor Middleton Hope?
Favor of the motion, yes.
Counselor Palladino? Counselor Parker?
Favor.
Acting Mayor Croson?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel?
In favor.
Mayor Higgins?
In favor.
Counselor Campbell?
In favor.
Carlson threw me off.
Thank you very much. Shall we stop? Uh, we're just gonna take a two to three-minute break here.
While while you have the chair, Deputy Mayor, just yell "Motion to adjourn."
No, I've got a motion I need through today, so not not gonna happen.
Hey, I have too.
Oh, this one? Yeah, sure. Jeff, you confused me there. That's what my hesitation was. I thought you were gonna vote against it. I Come on, let's get into this.
All right, thank you very much. We are back to the meeting. And we're gonna move on to official business resolution 6.2. Acting Mayor Croson, uh, City of Lethbridge and Federal Rapid Housing Initiative. I'll then read through the whole thing. I believe it'll be up on the screen.
Maybe you wanna just read the therefore.
Point two. I'll put the "Therefore, be it resolved if I could," Acting Mayor. And I'm sure you have enough uh, uh, in your debate to go through this. Therefore be resolved that council direct administration report to council through the September 15th, 2022 Cultural and Social Standing Policy Committee meeting with a report on how the city of Lethbridge is positioned to assist proponents in securing RHI funding for affordable and social housing projects in Lethbridge through land use and development process and co-investment opportunities via contributions of funding and or social land banking. So if there's, I will turn the time first, if you wanted, over to yourself, uh, Acting Mayor, and then we can go to some questions.
Can you please scroll down so I can see what date you have there?
September, September 15th, 2022.
Okay, um, 'cause mine has September 13th, and it was sent in to be at the regular council meeting for a reason, so I may ask for that to be amended because we are worried that we won't meet the deadline, but I'll speak to that in a bit.
All right.
So what this is and I'll, but I'll talk about that. This is essentially providing the city manager and administration direction to reach out to housing groups and work with them to create proposals for the third intake for the reaching home initiative, um, housing initiative. And what you really need to focus on is my fifth and sixth whereas's. Because Lethbridge did not receive any money in the first two intakes of RHI, even though we had several groups submit projects. And that is because projects that had municipal partnerships through approval, approval processes for land use and development, and as well as had co-investment opportunities via contributions of capital funding, operating funding, and or land were the ones that received it. CMHC is looking for shovel-ready projects when this go ahead, and Lethbridge had none that worked. And it is because of where the city of Lethbridge was in it. So before anything is submitted, um, the city's proposed contribution would be brought back. So what we are looking for, as I said, is to have direction to the city manager and administration to work and create proposals that would include land banking strategies, um, co-investment opportunities. So capital, operating money from the city of Lethbridge and or land. In September, this would come back to us, and we would see what administration had discussed and come up with ideas with the different groups. And no money or anything would have to be spent unless we are actually successful, and we are really hoping we will be successful in the next rapid housing initiatives when the third intake comes. So that's essentially what you have before you, even though there's a bunch of whereas's there. Um, and I will, of course, with your blessings, start with questions.
All right. Thank you very much for that, Acting Mayor Croson. I know that you would be able to explain that exactly how we would be able to understand what you were saying, so thank you very much for that. Counselor Campbell does have a question.
Just a quick uh, question about um, the reason for not getting um, some of this funding. Could that have been anything to do with um, the the fact that a lot, a lot of the areas in the city were not zoned properly? And they take that into consideration? Do are you, do you know that, or or is that possible?
I have been working with Mr. Malcolm and others in the department on this, and they did reach out to CMHC as well as look at who received funding, and that is part of it. Uh, they want things to be already pre-zoned, so that it can move forward quickly. And they do want, as I said, the municipality to be invested in this as well, because they want these things to it's rapid housing. They want this done as quickly as possible. So if there are any barriers in place, chances are you will not receive the funding.
So shovel-ready, meaning the zoning is done, and uh, a building is just ready to to be fixed, or whatever, or?
To be can, to be fixed, to be whatever, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Higgins. Um, we were just looking at the motion that Counselor Croson was commenting on, and it was going to cultural and social, and it shouldn't be. It should be going directly to council. So we don't have the right motion that was in your package, but we do have the right motion that was in the public council agenda. Actually, Janessa just found it, so the correct one is now on the screen, and it was in your public agenda, but not in your package, and I believe it was just the date returning. Thank you.
Yeah, we normally, of course, go to an SPC if SPCs were meeting in August. But to ensure we're ready, because we think intake will be opening in late September, early October, uh, we just don't want anything to delay this if this is approved. Um, and so we are asking for it to come back September 13th, council.
Further questions? Don't have any further questions in the Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Carlson?
What a shock. Uh, thank you, Mayor Higgins. Uh, thank you, Acting Mayor Croson, for bringing this uh, forward and to our attention. Um, I just have a question. To me, the wording, um, a report on how the city of Lethbridge is positioned, sort of says, um, this is the current state of affairs. I'm I'm wondering if it encompasses this, or if you'd accept a friendly um, amendment, or a amendment, or I'll propose amendment, you can decide how friendly it is, um, to also bring options or opportunities that may better assist uh, the proponents in securing those funds. So it's not just, this is how we're positioned, but this is how we could be better positioned. I'm wondering if that makes sense to you, or if that's what you e- expect the report to do regardless?
Yeah, I think the intent is the same, but if you want a can be positioned, instead of an is positioned, I would have no difficulty with that, because that is the idea. The idea, as I said, is to reach out to the groups in the next month and a half to say who's applying, what do you need, what can the city provide, and then to bring that back. So, you know, that is the idea, that is what we are looking to do.
Okay, thank you. If if you wouldn't mind, that would, that would make it more action-oriented, of how can we be positioned, rather than how are we uh, currently positioned, because apparently we weren't positioned very well. Um,
No.
So if you don't mind that, a report on how the city of Lethbridge could be better positioned, does that?
I find that
Okay, I think.
I see. As long as administration understands what the intent is. The intent is, let's get this money.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's gotta be the end of the day. Thank you, Counselor Carlson. I'm gonna call you Deputy Mayor, too. We've got all deputy mayors here tonight. Thank you. All right. From Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you very much. Um, one question I had just in taking a look at the RHI funding. Can someone confirm for me that um, as part of the approval process, um, there's a 20-year commitment from the municipality to backstop any shortfalls on any projects that we are approved for?
Yeah, I'll let administration take that one.
The question, to the best of our knowledge, it could be on a project by project basis. But I would defer to, to, to Michael Fox if he's got conclusive as to each CMHC agreement being the same.
Yeah, through the chair, I believe the person that's most been involved with this was CST and opportunity in Lethbridge. And I see Logan just popped on the screen. So I'll defer to him.
Yeah, at this time, we don't know exactly what the specifications are going to be for this new round of RHI funding. So we're, we're still waiting on that.
But that'll be something, then, that comes forward as part of that report?
Yes, if that information is, is made available, we'll bring that up.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
There is also the, the fact that they have a scoring matrix for these projects that come through. And any funding that the city is willing to commit improves the, the points that that proponent would receive.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. A question that I would have then is, so the previous funding envelope, which we know didn't quite make it past, oh, I don't know, Western Ontario.
Oh, no.
Not very many got them in Alberta, let's put it that way.
168 units in Alberta from round one and two, just none in Lethbridge.
Just none in Lethbridge. 68 units?
1,268.
12, oh, individually, right. Gotcha. I thought you said 68 is in a staff. So was, was that in the, in the first round? Was that, that had to have 30 years or 20 years of a backstop by the, by the city? Is that correct? In the first round? Or do we know that?
Mr. Bartholomew, perhaps, you know, I did not come across that in my research.
Yeah, to, to our knowledge and the discussions that we've had with CMHC, that was not the case. It wasn't a requirement. It just added to the, I guess, success of the applications.
Okay. Thank you for that. I see no further questions. And so to open debate, Acting Mayor?
Well, I, as I, we've talked about the need for housing. This is a way to support housing groups to help them be successful in the next round of RHI funding. We know that this next funding will be 25% of the beds will be towards women's projects. And it's estimated to create 6,000 new affordable units across Canada. And I would love Lethbridge to be part of that. So I hope my colleagues will support this and then support it again when we see it in September.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I see no further people in for debate. Can I take that as your opening and closing?
Of course. I'll call the question.
All right. Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to 6.3. The resolution from Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel. And this, this was adopted on July 5th, 2022, so at our last meeting. Official business resolution for free bus passes for refugees. And I think revised consideration would need, do we need three quarters on this one?
Only two thirds.
Two thirds, three quarters, two thirds? Okay. Two thirds. At this time at night? Perfect. We got that. All right. So it's free bus pass for refugees for Ukrainians. We did hear this before. Whereas refugees are arriving in the city of Lethbridge in increasing numbers and do not have transportation for their day-to-day needs. And whereas refugees may not have adequate transportation abilities to access services in the community, especially in the first year in their community. This was added in. Whereas Ukrainians entering Canada under the Canada-Ukraine Authorization for Emergency Travel Program are not considered refugees as there is an intention to return to Ukraine when it is safe to do so. And therefore, no amendment to the below resolution is required. Continues therefore to be resolved that the city council directs administration to extend the recreation fee assistance program to include the provision of free bus passes for a six-month period for any new refugees and, and Ukrainians who have come to Canada under the Canada-Ukraine Authorization for Emergency Travel Program, arriving in Lethbridge in 2022. And further be resolved that a, a report on the initiative be provided to city council by October 25th, 2022. Further be resolved that the funding for this initiative be allocated from the council contingencies up to a maximum of $90,000. Deputy Schmidt Rempel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We did hear this motion back on July 5th. It was initially brought forward by Counselor Parker. And at that time, we discussed free bus passes for refugees. And we were, we were speaking to Ukrainians fleeing the country at that point as refugees as well. I was contacted shortly thereafter by a group that works with, with, with people coming from the Ukraine as a result of the war in their country, who explained to me that Ukrainians entering Canada right now are coming under the Canada-Ukraine Authorization for Emergency Travel Program. They are not considered refugees because they do intend to return to their home country after, or when it is safe to do so. So that means that they do not have the required refugee paperwork that they would need to apply for our bus passes. So I am bringing this forward to ask a council to consider updating this motion so that we can include Ukrainians who are coming to Canada as a result of the war in their country.
Right. Questions? Counselor Parker?
I just wanted to thank Counselor Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel for kind of finding out about this, doing some work, coming back with some wordsmithing and all that. I greatly appreciate it. So I just wanted to say thank you.
And I do, I, somebody was in the queue that I did, was that you? Counselor, okay. Counselor Middleton Hope?
So perhaps I, I'm just seeking some clarification here. We have a number of people who are moving to this community from the, to the city and to the region, from a variety of different locations around the world. Some are designated as refugees, some are not. Some need help and some do not. This seems to be fairly exclusive in terms of who we're willing to provide bus passes for. Is that a fair assessment or not?
I think, because what we're looking at is refugees. So that does cover all refugees coming to our city. I think the specificity around Ukrainians is, is perhaps separate from that. And we do have to include them as a separate group because they are coming to Canada under a separate program and are not considered refugees and offered the same opportunities that refugees are. So refugees would open it up to other newcomers and refugees that are coming here. So we have that program currently in place and the ability for refugees to apply for those, those programs. But we don't have our Ukrainian friends able to apply for those because they aren't coming as refugees.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
I have no further questions in the queue. Open for debate. Deputy Mayor?
The intent was always to include, to include Ukrainians under this act or under this legislation. And really what this is doing is making sure that they are included there, offering some clarification that they are coming under a different program and enabling them that opportunity to get bus passes, to get to those doctor's appointments. I know that's one of the necessary things they have to do as soon as they get here. And other necessary appointments right off the bat, helping them sort of get their leg up as, as they work through a very difficult time in their lives. So I would ask for council's support in that.
No one in the opening or in the debate. So I'll take as your opening and closing. And question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? That definitely gets the two thirds. Thank you. Unanimous. All right, move on to bylaws. Bylaw 6374, Ward Boundary Commission. First reading, be resolved that bylaw 6374 Ward Boundary Commission be given first reading. And I do have the amendment here. Do we read that, Madam City Clerk? Not yet. Okay. So as for a first reading. And this is from Acting Mayor Croson. Any questions?
All the questions.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Counselor Croson, do you have an amendment?
Mr. Mayor, just want to check, just want to check that you recorded my vote opposed?
Oh, you're opposed. I'm sorry, Counselor Carlson. I did not. Counselor Carlson opposed. Thank you for that. Counselor Croson?
I do have two amendments. I submitted them to Ms. Hilford. As I think everyone knows, that I would like to have this be a more open conversation about how we can encourage people to become more involved with our political system. And I think within the Ward Boundary Commission, we can do that. So under the mandate, I have added to report back on recommendations for how the city could work to encourage more participation by Lethbridge residents in the municipal political system. And under terms of reference, 5.1F, whether or not the commission determines that the city requires a ward system, if in the discussions held by the commission, they discover ways that the city's political structures may be improved, they should report back and make recommendations in their final report for the considerations of council. Both of these, I think, would make this a more comprehensive discussion. I know many of us are not sure if the ward system is the answer, but we certainly want to encourage people, more people to vote, more people to be involved, and to enhance our political system. And we know that in these types of discussions, the last time when they looked at whether or not councils should be at full-time, they actually recommended a ward system. So sometimes these discussions go in other ways. And this would just ensure that the commission captures those conversations and provides that information back to council as well.
So I do have a question. So in addition, I think you've pretty much explained it there is that beyond even the, the ward system, this could be anything else of political structure that could be improved within the system. Is that correct?
Yeah, if their conversations go there and they, you know, have a great idea, this would say, make sure those conversations are captured as well.
Excellent. I see no further questions. Did you want to close on that?
I just called a question on the amendments.
All right. So now we've, so we do one amendment at a time. So amendment number one, so under two mandate addition to the following new clause. So that's the one to re. Oh, Counselor Carlson, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You have a question?
No, I'm in, I'm in for later. Sorry.
Okay. So amendment number one is to report back on recommendations for how the city could, could work to encourage more, wow, more participation by Lethbridge residents in the municipal political system. That's amendment number one. So the vote is on the second reading as amended for the first amendment, correct, Madam City Clerk?
Just an amendment before second.
Which is the amendment before second. Okay. So all in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. So then on amendment number two, from Acting Mayor Croson, under the terms of reference addition to following new clause, we spoke about whether or not the commission determines that the city requires a ward system. If in the discussions held by the commission, they discover ways that the city's political structure may be improved, they should report back and make recommendations in their final report for the consideration of council. Acting Mayor Croson? Question?
Call the question on that.
Question's been called. All in favor on the amendment? That's unanimous. Now, we go to second reading as amended. Be resolved that bylaw 6374 Ward Boundary Commission be given a second reading as amended. Counselor Croson?
Thank you. I probably questions for this.
Questions?
Thank you. I did have questions on a possible amendment.
Okay.
In terms of reference, so 5.1A. Can someone explain to me what requires means?
I'll have the city solicitor answer that because that would mean if.
I, I could look it up in the dictionary for you. And to me, it would mean is absolutely necessary, but. And I think we know where I would fall down on that. So if someone can define requires for me and how that's going to be determined?
Are you thinking more along would benefit from instead of require if it's not equally necessary?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Which section are we?
Sorry, terms of reference 5.1A.
5.1A.
Like, to me, require would be like if the MGA said thou must have.
In the context of this bylaw, requires would be more less of an absolute necessity as of the kind that you described. Like, for example, being prescribed by the MGA and being something more similar to council is of the opinion that we require one as in need one to accomplish its needs. So within the plain language of require, I think there's a, you know, some gradation there. It certainly doesn't mean required in the sense of being required by the MGA or some other legislation. But it's asking the commission to consider whether we should have and recommend to council whether we should have.
Thank you. I, I wouldn't mind proposing an amendment then, Madam City Clerk?
All right. An amendment. Go ahead.
Replacing requires with would benefit from.
In 5.1, sorry, 5.1A. Okay. We have that up on the screen, on here? 5.1A with the replacement.
Sorry, it'd be replace city requires with community would benefit from.
Okay, requires the community would benefit from. Counselor Middleton Hope?
That, that's presumptive, that the community would benefit somehow. Benefit being a positive. Not all members of council, although I would not be in among this group, not all members of council feel that the ward system would benefit the city. So I think the language as it is, is not prescriptive, it's descriptive. So I'm fine with the way it is.
Counselor Parker, I see that you're in the queue. Is that for debate? Okay. All right. So a vote on the amendment, or sorry, Counselor Carlson, if you.
A member of council would like to see it. We will get it on the screen.
Get it up on the screen there first.
Couple seconds. Thanks.
Thank you. And while it's coming up on the screen, part of my reasoning is the intent here is to benefit the community rather than the city, which is denoted by the capital C corporation. Means that the corporation would require it. But I think the language would be better served that the community would benefit from it.
Going to be on the screen here shortly. We're just going to get that put up. All right. Can you see that? Counselor Carlson and Deputy, or Acting Mayor Croson?
Yep, I've got it open in front of me.
Okay.
Counselor Carlson, are you proposing to replace city with community? Or can you, can you repeat what amendment you would like again, please?
To remove or to replace city requires with community would benefit from.
Mission will fulfill its mandate by considering the following questions. Number one would be if. one would be if the community would benefit from a ward system, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless there's any further questions, I'll just call the vote on that.
No questions on that, and we've all heard what that change is, okay, and on the change, all in favor? Opposed? That carries.
Counselor Croson, are you in favor of that? I know, but I need to record.
I'm always in favor of the community.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that is in there, so as amended, we'll go back to the resolution, number two, as, second reading as amended, be it the bylaw, be it resolved that bylaw six three seven four ward boundary commission be given a second reading as amended, oh, sorry, go ahead.
With that amendment passing, I wonder if it would be prudent to consider a similar amendment to five sub one sub B, which has the same wording as city and require, just for consistency's sake?
Thank you, I had my hand up to make that as well.
Okay, five one B, if we can go through to that, it's the same, the same wording as was five one A, correct? Contact, yeah, okay. Counselor Carlson, you will, your, that amendment, as you had your hand up, I take it for that? Okay?
I did, and I had one other question later.
All in favor? Opposed? Got that? Any more amendments? Before we continue on with second reading as amended.
I have a question.
We're fresh out of answers today. No, I'm just kidding, go ahead, Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, so five one A triggers, if, if it is decided the community would benefit, five one A triggers five one B through E, as well as two, three, four?
Can we open that up again, Janessa, sorry?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you, it's, it's just a bit odd, because what happens if this, if the commission determines that the city wouldn't benefit in the first meeting, is, are all the costs, costs still incurred? What happens?
Well, if, Acting Mayor, I, I just, when I see that, if I could, what, what I see from this, going back to what the change from five one F that Acting Mayor Croson did, that this report's going to be, bring back more than just that, it's going to be the political structures, other political structures that could be improved, is my understanding, and, and that's just myself, Acting Mayor Croson, is that?
That is why I brought that in, so if they, whether or not they decide a ward system is necessary, they would still have those community conversations, and they might say, you don't need a ward, but you need to let sixteen year olds vote. Who knows what the conversation will be. There would be a report regardless.
So even if they decide we don't require a ward system, or our community would benefit from such a system, they'll still do all the work on number of wards, number of councillors per ward, potential budget, electoral ward boundaries, council policy, review timelines, ensure engagement plan.
This is just my own opinion, but they would have to do certain things to be able to make the decision, but at some point, they would say, we've made the decision, we wouldn't go on. Now, that would be my opinion, Mr. Lowen would legally, to my opinion, be accurate, if they, if they got into it and said, we've got this far, we've decided no, why would we do the rest of the work if we said no to a ward system? At some point, it would be-
I think that question should be addressed by the clerk's office with the expertise and, and when the threshold to make that decision is, but from a legal perspective, just looking at the text of five one B as it's changed, you only, you only begin to design a ward model if, once the commune, once the commission has reached the conclusion that it would be a benefit to the community. If they have made a determination that it is not a benefit to the community, B would not be triggered, and nor would C, D. You can look at, at two, three, and four as going, even if it's not at this time, they might still want to, they still might want to make recommendations as to the next time, or a threshold that the city might want to consider that again in the future. There's certainly Counselor Croson's additional mandate that would have to be satisfied as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Am I allowed to ask a question regarding the document, the PDF in front of me here? Okay, good. In regards to the membership, there'll be seven voting members are to be appointed from the general public by council. How do we go about doing that? Or is it like an interview process, and who would be doing the interviews, and who, like, let's say you have thirty people apply for this?
I'll answer part of that, and then Ms. Hilford might, will have the rest, but this is part of the reason we're looking for third reading today, so that the advertising can go out with the BCC Board Commission and Committees advertising, because it would be part of that. And so the same process that we use to get people on to the different boards, commissions, and committees would be used for this, except you will see and hear that we do have certain backgrounds that we're looking for those people, and so those backgrounds would help guide that process, but it would be part of setting up any other committee that we do.
And so who on council would be doing the screening?
That has not been determined at this point, I don't believe.
I volunteer.
Remember, this is a process that we go through, but I will ask Ms. Hilford if I answered that correctly.
Counselor Croson, or Acting Mayor Croson, I agree with what you have said, also with regards to who would be doing the screening, that's to be determined, and maybe that would be determined at the first governance meeting in the fall, as to the screening and interview panel.
My follow-up question to that, if I may, let's say there's people during elections or in the past, community members who have been strong advocates for either or, for or against, would that hurt them in this process of going through the screening?
That would depend on who's doing the screening.
Well, the, the point is, and I'm going to, I'm going to be frank here, is, if someone could easily say, you know, who's on that committee, and if they kind of go sway towards how you think, and how you believe, it's, wow, I like the way you think, I'm going to put you on that committee, that's what, that's what I'm concerned about.
With respect, Counsel-
Someone reassure me on this one.
With respect, Counselor Parker, I think we do the same thing we do with all our boards, commissions, and committees, some people may have a strong affinity to police commission, and may think a certain type of person should be on there, or a certain type of person should be on the animal welfare. It is council's role to do that, and I think we can trust council to do that appropriately.
Counselor Middleton Hope?
Thank you, I think, just to, to sort of play off of what Acting Mayor Croson was saying, I'd really like to see a more neutral approach to that, almost like a jury selection. This is a polarizing question, and a polarizing discussion for our community, as, as would be the, the bridge, if we put together a, a commission or a committee to evaluate the bridge, so I'd like to really stress the importance of having neutrality in the selection of those who are going to examine the ward system and come up with recommendations.
Remember, for all our board commissions and committees, we do blind interviews, so we don't know who the people are until we interview, but we can, governance can, if this passes, then governance would be the next level, that would help in those determinations. Governance can work with our council colleagues to make sure we have interview questions that take care of any concerns people have about who would be on that BCC.
Agreed, thank you.
So governance can be, they will be the ones selecting?
No, not select.
Recommending.
If anybody has, no, recommending the process for how those people would be interviewed better.
Thank you. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. Counselor Middleton Hope triggered something in me, are, is there any wording we could put in place around screening for a lack of bias? Just to, because-
Under one C, we have the following skills and background, and we can put in there objectivity as one of the skills backgrounds that you're looking for.
I, I think that may provide some comfort, it may even be better to ensure that all members of this commission are not citizens or residents of Lethbridge, because that's a very objective way to look at it. I know that sounds odd, but you can't be more unbiased if it doesn't impact you one way or the other than you just look at the facts.
If you want to bring that in, we would need, we would need an amendment for that. Counselor Carlson?
Doesn't that set a precedent in regards to our BCCs?
Hold on one-
Yeah, the BCCs do say that the public members do have to be residents of Lethbridge, with the exception of, I think of one BCC.
Counselor Carlson, are you recommending an amendment? Do note X or represent a diversity of life experiences within the city or ward systems more generally. So there is an attempt there to have balanced view, but do you want something more around objectivity in there, do you were talking about possibly an amendment?
No, I think, I, I think I'm, I think I'm okay. I'm on governance committee, correct?
Last in my look, I believe so.
Thank you.
Right, so, so no amendment there? I take it. And Counselor Parker?
No offense, when I look at this, what you're asking for in regards to the people that are going to sit on this, you've got, you really don't have, for lack of a term, average citizen who wants to be participate in this. If you don't have these skills, you're not some kind of academic or something like that, you're almost penalized, you're penalized. And so was there ever thought of, like, saying two from the west side, three from the north side, and just kind of breaking it up, so you have a guy, you know, diverse group of people, like, just because someone's big in urban planning or statistics, then, then if you don't have those skills, and that's what you're looking for, then you're disenfranchised. I think, why can't average Joe or average someone be on this, who's part of it? That's what I'm looking at, I'm kind of concerned, it's almost too specific.
If you read it carefully, Counselor Parker says shall consider, it doesn't say-
I know what shall means, I know what shall means, too, and how it's interpreted, and so this, when you have these examples in here, it kind of like says, so when the person's being interviewed, it's check off this box, you've pretty much checked off this box, perfect, you'd be perfect for this group, so.
Would you like to change the shall to a may?
Shall, hands counsel shall consider the following. I don't even know, I don't even know why you need to have those things in there, as examples, you know?
If I may, we took those from best practices, from other terms of reference and bylaws across the country, they were included in the report that we brought forward the last few months, so we just put them in the bylaw, and of course, council can amend it to whatever they want.
And I, and I respect that, and I appreciate that, I just don't want someone to be chosen because they're in that field, and that's why they check off the box, you know what I mean, so, that's where my concern is.
If you did change it to may, that would be addressed, because it's just looking at those, but not the only thing you're considering.
That amendment, that we go from shall in six one C to may?
We have an amendment from Counselor Parker, six one, can we scroll up on? Six one C, council shall consider the following skills and backgrounds in the appointment of public members.
So I'll say council may consider the following, and thank you for that explanation, Madam City Clerk.
Note also XI, where it says anything council should consider, that's like any job skill you want.
All right, so on that proposed amendment, Counselor Parker, is there anything you need to, you want to add there? So just a vote on, okay, all in favor? And any opposed? All right, that carries unanimously. So now we move on, is there any other amendments that are on the table, or anybody wants to present? No more amendments? So I'm going to go through with second reading as amended, be resolved that bylaw six three seven four ward boundary commission be given second reading, again, as amended. Acting Mayor Croson?
I think we've had a thorough conversation around it, so I won't provide any debate, except to hope my colleagues will support it.
Thank you, I do see debate, Counselor Parker?
We really haven't had much debate, we've just done some amendments and all that, so, first of all, I think I will support this, and for the being, reason being is, when it was first brought to council, in regards to moving forward on this, about two or three months ago, I felt that it was incumbent that we do this, because during the election process, we did ask a question, and even if people didn't agree with the question being asked, we have to follow suit with doing what we did, and even though, it doesn't matter if it was a fifty-four, or fifty-four, forty-six, or seventy, thirty, when a majority wins, that's what you have to do in, in regards to doing the research and doing the analysis, and it doesn't mean that you have to move forward with it, but you do have to do, do your due diligence in researching it and looking at the merit of it, and then coming back with a recommendation to council. And even though, even if it is yes or no to proceed forward after the recommendation from the board, it's still up to council to make that decision, and when the decision is made, we can, we can be reassured that we followed process in regards to, we listened to what the voters said during the two thousand twenty-one election, and now we have closure on it. So this is the next step in going forward, and this does not tie up the hands and council endorsing, but at the same time, it also looks at different ways of governance, too, in regards to how can we engage the community as well. So I'm glad it's just not about the ward system, it's about us doing a better job in regards to governance than the job that we do, so for that reason alone, I would be supporting this.
Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Hagan, for consistency's sake, I, I will not be supporting this second I've talked a lot about ward systems and the pros and the cons in my years at, at council, and I'm firmly on the side of the cons. I've talked to a lot of people who are trying to change voting systems and voting practices for the better, and those are getting rid of things like first past the post, which ward systems, to me, are going the opposite directions. So I think this is a, would be a backwards move for our community, it, it moves us in the opposite direction that many jurisdictions are going, many jurisdictions have moved away from the ward system, even though they've had it, and other jurisdictions have attempted to go to ward systems and found out, no, that is not the proper course. So I won't be in support of this, for consistency's sake, I do appreciate the work that was done, and the, I realize I'm in the minority, but for consistency, I have to make my voice heard, and I won't be in support, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carlson, Counselor Middleton Hope?
Well, thank you, Your Worship, I didn't realize that this is an opportunity to have a debate about this, about the question, so I'm simply going to cut it short and say I'm in support of this, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt-Rampel?
I too will be supporting this motion, it came through loud and clear from our voters that they wanted us to take a look at that, and it's incumbent upon us to listen to our, to our electorate, and follow through on what we promise, thank you.
I too will support this for the reasons already mentioned, so- So with that, let's hit it back to Deputy, Acting Mayor, you're going to be Acting Mayor Croson. Thank you, Acting Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. When I said I debated this before, it's because I debated it twice at governance, once at council, and now here with the bylaw. And I have no doubt we will have many, many conversations about this, and that is what this is really about. It is the community conversation, how, what can we improve, what can we make better, what does our community want, need, and should have? With that, I will call the question.
Question has been called, all in favor? Any opposed? So that's seven to one. Seven to one, now we will go through with the authorization to do all three readings. Now, this must be unanimous today, so I'll read that off here. Be resolved that council authorize all three readings for bylaw six three seven four ward boundary commission as amended. Acting Mayor Croson?
Yes, normally, of course, we would do bring first reading and then have the two weeks. But to ensure that we can get linked up with the board commissions and committees advertising that is happening, to ensure we can have this ready by the fall, we are looking to do three readings on this. It is something that we occasionally do, and I'm hoping my colleagues will support this.
Thank you, I do have a question from Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins, I, I hate to be the, the wrench in the works. So my question is through you to city clerk. If this fails, and I pride myself on consistency, so you may know where I'm going. If this fails, can you still put this into some advertising as a possibility? That, that people may be interviewed for this committee? Or further to that, if it fails, would there still be time to do this after third reading occurs at our next meeting?
Not really understanding your question, Counselor Carlson. If this fails, third reading would go to September meeting, so that would be September thirteenth, then we would advertise. We can't advertise before, if that's what you.
You couldn't advertise, you're a possibility?
No, we need the direction from council.
Okay, thanks.
There was an amendment coming forward for a possibility to advertise, but there was not, right, Counselor Carlson? Counsel, Counselor Middleton Hope?
No, just a, a comment in regards to the democracy here that we're talking about.
That's your, that's your debate.
That's my debate.
Opening debate, I see no further questions, Acting Mayor Croson?
I'll simply call the question.
Question has been called, on again, the authorization to all three readings, so this must be unanimous, all in favor? Any opposed? Counselor Carlson, so seven to one. So we will not do the third reading as, as we have here, so we will move on with the agenda. Third reading will go to September thirteenth meeting. All right, I'll ask, any committee submissions? And as being as we haven't. I'm just, I'm just right here, committee submissions. Any administration presentations? I know this is just part of it, it sits in the agenda, so I'll just get a nod, no? So with that, there is administration submission ten point one, council action plan Q two, Q two, twenty twenty-two report. And this is moved by Counselor Campbell. Be it resolved that city council receive the council action plan Q one, twenty twenty-two report for information as provided in attachment one. Counselor Campbell?
You may recall back in January of this year, we unanimously adopted a gateway to opportunity, Lethbridge City Council Action Plan, this report summarizes the progress and status of each council action plan initiative for the period of April first to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and I'll open it up if there's any questions.
Any questions?
So there's not.
And I see no questions, so is that opening and closing debate, I take it?
That's it, call the vote.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. All right, moving on to administrative inquiries and responses, inquiries or responses? Seeing none, city council updates, any city council updates? I see none. I have a resolution from Acting Mayor Croson, fourteen point one, development opportunity. Be resolved that city council direct that the closed meeting discussions, reports, and documents with respect to the development opportunity remain confidential pursuant to sections twenty-three, local public body confidences, and twenty-four advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And further be resolved that council direct administration to proceed with the confidential directed, direction provided in closed session. Acting Mayor Croson?
Call the question.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? And I have a resolution from Counselor Middleton Hope, closed meeting, airport framework incentive update, fourteen point two. Be resolved that city council direct that the closed meeting discussion reports and documents with respect to the airport framework incentive update remain confidential pursuant to section twenty-three, local public body confidences, and twenty-four advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Middleton Hope? Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? And we have another resolution from Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel, closed meeting, water infrastructure update, fourteen point three. Be it resolved that city council direct that the closed meeting discussions, reports, documents, and attachments with respect to water infrastructure update remain confidential pursuant to section twenty-one, harmful to intergovernmental relations, twenty-three, local public body confidences, twenty-four, advice from officials, and twenty-five, harmful to economic and other interests of a public body of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And further be resolved that council direct administration to proceed with the confidential direction provided in closed, closed section. Deputy Mayor Schmidt Rempel?
I'll call for the vote.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries. And from Counselor Campbell, closed meeting, boards, commissions, and committees matter, fourteen point four. Be resolved that city council direct that the closed meeting discussions with respect to boards, commissions, and committees, committees matter remain confidential pursuant to section twenty-four, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And further be resolved that council postpone this item to a future meeting of council, closed session. Counselor Campbell?
Call the vote.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? With that, we are adjourned, thank you.
Jeffrey, you coming out to play?